Looks like you're all set now, Marty.
All right, we are live. All right, well, welcome everybody to the April 13, 2021 Meeting of the Southboro Board of Selectmen. It's 6:30 PM. The first item of business, well, actually, after public comment is going to be a joint meeting with advisory. So the governor's intro is going to cover both ourselves and at least advisory. I don't think there's any other committees who are going to have likely forums tonight. So pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, Chapter 30A, Section 18, and the governor's March 15, 2020 order opposing strict limitation on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Southboro Board of Selectmen will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and their parties for the right and requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the Town of Southboro website at www.southrotham.com. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to watch or participate in the meeting may do so in the following manner by finding the meeting at www.southrotham.com/remotemeetings. Now, in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so despite best efforts, we will post on Southboro's website an audio or video recording transcript or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. All right, we've got two minutes, we're at 6:32. Hello, everybody. I'm calling the meeting to order. Well, why don't we bring over the, start bringing over the advisory folks? I'm assuming they are available. And in the interim, why don't we see if there's any public comment? Ms. Reynolds has your hand up. So Kathy and other members of advisory, our first matter of business is public comment. So if you can just hold on for a second before you call your meeting to order. Looks like we've got one public comment. Do we have Claire brought over?
Good evening.
Hey Claire, how you doing?
Good, thanks. I will be very quick. My comment tonight is regarding the zoning bylaw that we are all familiar with and the latest version, which appears as Article 37 in the warrant. I want to remind all of the selectmen of the original request that was given from the planning board to the EDC. I went back and watched the videos. This is from April 2019, where the planning board told the EDC, create the document that you want and bring it to us for review. I'm not going to get into all the nitty gritty tonight. I understand this is public comment. However, in keeping with the initial request and then last night's planning board meeting, where there was a list of about eight items, which are still what the planning board considers outstanding. The whole, the whole issue of what was the initial intention of this has gotten morphed into something that has grown larger than was originally planned from the first request of the planning board to the EDC. And by that, I mean that the request was for adding mixed use into the current bylaw. The reason that I'm bringing this up, folks, is that if this article does not go to town meeting in May with the support of all of the groups, which were supposed to be in collaboration, there is going to be an issue which is going to impact future grant opportunities. For those of you who have read up on what's involved with the One Stop Program, one of the things that they're going to look at is, okay, Southboro, how have you worked on using grant money that you have? And in terms of going forward?
And Claire, I'm going to, I'm going to jump in and just, you know, we're bleeding pretty long on this in terms of the public comment.
Okay, I'm sorry.
That's okay. And, and believe me, I've worked pretty intensively on the One Stop. So I'm aware, and I think other members of the board are aware of the point you're making in terms of, of the left hand maybe not supporting what the right hand is trying to doing and may harm the, the town's efforts to get funding down the line. We're pretty aware of that. Okay?
Okay. That is the point that I was trying to make. I was trying to keep it as succinct as possible as well as giving enough background for the people who were not familiar with what the original request was.
No, fair enough. No, you're right. That's gotten lost in the shuffle a little bit, but, but we are going to make an effort to make sure that that's punctuated as we go forward. Okay?
It'll have to be.
Okay, Claire. Thanks very much. All right, welcome, members of advisory. Kathy, I see yourself. Andrew Dennington, Tim Martell, Andrew Pfaff, Jason Malinowski. I don't see John Rooney, but I see his name. So I'm assuming you have a forum. Do you want to call your meeting to order?
I do, we do have a forum. So I'll call the advisory committee meeting to order at 6:36. Mr. Healy's already read the required language from the governor, so I think we're all set.
All right, and my understanding is that we've got some folks from the municipal technology committee who have a somewhat hard stop pushing towards seven o'clock. Are they, I see Matt and Angela Mar. So why don't we bring them over as well? Is that the first item that we want to talk about for those reasons?
Yep.
Okay. Hi, Ms. Marne, nice to see you again.
Nice to see you.
And hopefully we'll be joined by Mr. Probst in a minute. He's disappeared from the attendees, but he has not appeared yet in the... There we go.
Vanessa, can you bring over Judy Betts also for advisory?
Hey Matt, are you going to be just audio or are we going to see you on video in a second as well? Sorry, my client took a while to reconnect.
There he is.
Oh, there you go. Yep, and Angela's should be on as well. There we go, okay, great. All right, so we received this afternoon, I suspect advisory has received it as well, some information from you folks, you folks being the MTC, on a update revision to your budget. So we've got that, we've seen that. To just sort of jumpstart a little bit, and why don't, whether it's going to be Matt or Angela, whoever, pick us up from there. Claire, Angela, do you want to walk us through?
Sure. Just pull it up in front of me. So I think the consolidated budget that you've seen now is one that we've been reviewing. And we're able to speak with the advisory group about previously. We've added the salary for the IT director as well as the second role for the IT manager. So we are reflecting two full-time positions in the budget for fiscal '22. We've also added some funding to address the work that's happening with the town department assessments. I think this is work that we talked with the Board of Selectmen about in our last meeting, where in addition to the strategy work that the MTC is working on, we've also begun a department-by-department review to understand what technical issues each department is coming up against. And that also includes discussions with them about the type of data they're handling as well as the security controls that are in place and what would need to be augmented going forward. So we've listed some funding in the budget in order to deal with the action items that come out of those interviews and assessments. And then the remainder of the budget is largely more operational cost that the last IT manager has put forward in terms of just what's required essentially to run the town departments and the, the technology that's in place for the town. You'll see the computer services is all of the software costs that we need to account for as well as our contracted services and a small amount of funding for employee training as well as data communications and computer supplies.
Angela, can I stop you for a second? It sounds like you're looking at something. I suspect I know what it is, but it's not coming up on our screens.
Oh, okay. Could I get permission to share my screen? I'm sorry, I thought you had, I thought you...
No, no, that's okay. I realized a couple of paragraphs in that you thought we were looking at something.
There we go, sorry about that. So is this the same document that, that you referenced at the beginning of the meeting that you have?
It is.
Okay, okay. So yeah, I'll just, I'll quickly just summarize here. We've got the salaries for the two positions. We have the funding for the department assessment and security review. And then essentially the operational cost for the running of the town technology, including our software cost, our computers peripherals, and a small amount of money for the training as well as travel, data communications. We have removed the funding that was here for the additional workstations. We understand that will be accounted for separately. And then the rather large line item that we spent some time earlier in the year looking at, that's listed in the capital budget. So if anyone is looking for that line item, that's part of capital. Let me just pause there. Matt, anything that you'd add to that?
Yeah, thanks for that overview. And to be clear, you know, I know there's been lots of discussion around staffing models and potential staffing models, et cetera. And we definitely are looking into that as part of our, our needs assessment. As we go through each department of the town assessing the technology needs as well as the security needs, we will definitely consider that, consider different options, including potential regionalization. But we consider that getting a second full-time position immediately is a quick win. It is a sort of no, no lose option right now. Like, we, we need it either way. Even if we were to move to a regional staffing model, we would still need to fund two full-time positions, given our significant amount of IT needs and our redundant, needs for redundancy of, of individuals. So basically, we're high, strong advocates for adding that second full-time position. And, you know, obviously supporting the rest of the budget as is.
Okay, for either one of you, I'm going to jump in and then, then I think Kathy, what I'll do is I'll go around some of the members of our board very quickly to see if they have some questions and then, because I think you've already had a conversation with the folks from the MTC.
I have, but can we correct two things real quick that Angela and Matt don't know about? Can you, so you know how we took out the ClearGov?
Yeah.
Software last night? We'd like to put back in $4,000 for the capital module, not the operating budget module, but the capital module. So if we could put 4,000 back in that line item, both, I think, capital planning committee and Brian Ballantyne would like that to happen. And then Angela, that $5,000, we didn't know what it was last night. I did talk to Mr. Ballantyne about it, and I don't think he, we don't, he doesn't think he put that in. So we're still not sure what that $5,000 is that's on.
Okay.
Okay, so that's my two small comments here.
Which line is that, Kathy?
If you go on down, Angela, can you scroll down a little bit more? I think it's there. So there it is, line 41. So we're just not sure what this is. So it, we can take it out because Brian doesn't, we thought Brian, so to be, to be clear, this is Tom LaFlamme's budget for the most part when he left in November, other than the changes Angela just described. So most of this is his numbers, and this 5,000 wasn't in there. We thought it got added later, so we thought Brian must have added it, but Brian doesn't think he added it. So we just don't know what it is.
Okay.
I think there was an idea that that was implementation cost for the money that's being carried in the capital budget for the addition of the virtual machine servers that we had talked about before. But I think that's, you know, that's still to be determined.
Okay. All right, but everybody's agreed that if we can't identify what that is, we're taking it out?
Yes.
Okay.
Bonus pool.
All right, very quickly, and then I'm going to, I'm going to go to Lisa, who I'm mindful of your, your time. One of the, one of the things obviously that we've talked about at our meetings has been the, just the timing, which is unfortunate with a new IT director about to come on board. Have, have you all, being the MTC, been in communication with him about the, the approach that you're suggesting here? Either in general terms or specific terms?
Yes, we started the outreach, oh, I'm sorry. We've started the outreach to him. We've shared the strategy and some of the intro documents, and we'll be doing a full onboarding for him when he officially begins later this month.
And later tonight, I, I've invited him to our meeting later tonight, and we will be reviewing this in our meeting later tonight in starting in a few minutes. Okay, all right, I'm going to go to Ms. Brashio.
Great, thank you. I have a couple of questions and a couple of comments. So the $26,000 that was taken out to be funded through CARES, can you, my understanding was that was replacing some workstations? So laptops, so all of those laptops are now being funded through CARES? I guess I'm trying to understand, are they because of COVID?
Angela, let me handle that one because they took that out at, at my request last night when we talked about this. So we want to fund them through COVID, at least through CARES. Andrew Pfaff is going to add something to that in a minute. But we believe that there is language in the CARES Act that would allow this to be funded. We at least want to try to do that. So we want to take it out because if it's in the budget, it's not going to get funded. We may, you know, if we fail, we may have to put something back in. But we feel like between the 40,000 that's in capital, that we've still got a little bit of a backstop as far as being able to use that for this if we needed to. It's worded in a way that's flexible enough that we could buy laptops with that money too. So we just know that if it's in the budget, we can't. So if Andrew Pfaff could wait in a minute, it would help, I think, understand why we think this can't be funded. We know, we know of other towns that have done this. I talked with someone this morning and said that their entire school system got all new equipment because of CARES, including all, all workstations. So we know it's been done, and we think we should at least try to see if we can't get CARES to fund new laptops. Why we're still working remotely.
Kathy, let me ask you this. So, so you mentioned capital. So if CARES kicks this back, where are we going to fund these from? Where are we going to backfill this from? So did you say capital?
I said there's 40,000 in the capital budget for, it's basically a placeholder. As we try to transition to the cloud, there's a number there to help us do that. It's basically described as infrastructure, et cetera. So it's not very specific as far as what it is. Originally was $90,000 for new servers. That's been changed, it's $40,000 for a much more general approach to what we're trying to do. So I, I think it might fit in there. So as far as what we would do if we buy the laptops and then CARES comes back and says no upon audit, that's one source. Second source is always, you know, the reserve fund. Third source would be in a special town meeting, putting this back in the budget so that we've got something to cover it. Some other type of intra-departmental transfer within this department if there's money left over, which we'll have to see at the end of the year. I don't know where this department stands right now, year-to-date, as far as compared to its budget goes. So that's three ways to do it. And Lisa, we don't know that we even need the laptops. This was something Tom did a long time ago. So we don't know what Jason and MPC really think about whether we need $26,000 worth of new laptops. I don't know.
So I guess that brings me to my second point that I'm concerned about in, in seeing the $95,000 for the additional full-time person. Again, I'm a little surprised that the number is so close to what the director is getting. I, I question that a little bit, but I think I worry about the new IT director. We are, we are setting a course for him, and I worry that we're undermining his ability and his authority to access what he feels his needs are by, by doing this. I think I still support the approach that Mark talked about at our last meeting was, you know, to put additional monies in the contracted services and, and use that or, or switch that as, as may be. But I think there's additional saving of benefits in still exploring this and giving, again, I worry that the new IT director's not going to have the opportunity to, his needs are being assessed before he gets here. And I want to make sure, because he, he's a department head himself, and he's, he answers to Mr. Purple. And I just, I want him to be comfortable and not feel hamstrung in the decisions that he may or may not want to make. So I will leave it at that. That was more of a question, a comment than a question, but those are my concerns. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to go to Ms. Malinowski. Matt or Angela, do you have, again, that, that kind of goes back to my question, which was how, how closely the new IT gentleman has been kept in the loop about the things that we're talking about tonight? So maybe as I go to Ms. Malinowski, maybe there's some, but, but if you could keep that in the back of your minds to address at some point. Chelsea?
I have the same concerns that Lisa just mentioned. I'm kind of at the same point from last week's conversation. In terms of the workstations, because this is kind of a new item this week, I, I would just encourage us, if there's any workstations that can be replaced now that we can take, take advantage of CARES, to do that now rather than kind of cut this entire budget out. I think that, you know, this is, it seems like we had workstations budgeted for this year. So I would just fear that, that we're just going to have a larger increase next year when we have to put it in. So maybe we can figure out who's due to be replaced and kind of figure out a hybrid model with that. But that's where I'm at. Thank you.
Mr. Shea?
Thanks. So while I, again, share similar concerns, as voiced by Ms. Brashio and Ms. Malinowski. And while I did get the email earlier, in all honesty, I just did not have an opportunity to open it up and see what was going on here with this. So I guess bigger picture view, how does the 447, 285, that's the current request, compare to what the current number is? How does that, you know, what impact does that have on on the, on the overall tax rate, et cetera? How does that number compare to, to past years? And I just did not have the opportunity to, to do that looking. I don't need exact answers now, but is there a general idea as to what overall impact that has on the tax rate?
I guess not so much in the tax rate. I mean, now we can figure out with, with Brian or Mark later, but how much does it increase your budget? That's the, in other words, what was the, what was the number before it was 447? Where are we?
So the fiscal '21 number was...
349, Angela, because I know you guys have to go. And then the number before these changes was 379 is what Tom had proposed when he left in November. So 379 is the number that's in the spreadsheet, budget spreadsheet right now.
Actually, the number that's in the budget spreadsheet right now, because we had put after the last selectmen's meeting, there's an additional $30,000 in contracted services. So the number that's being carried is 408. So it's about a $35,000 difference between what's being presented and what's in there now.
But Mark, didn't you also take out the 20 for ClearGov?
I would defer to Brian as to whether that number is out of here. I'm not sure that it is though, so that there is going to be a difference, yes.
So what we're talking about is, is, this is directed to Mark Purple. Mark, it looks like what the, the, the number that is in front of us tonight from the MTC is ballpark, $35,000 to $40,000 higher than the number that is currently part of the overall budget projection.
Correct. But that, like I said, and I think it's already been pointed out by Ms. Brashio, that also assumes that $26,000 are coming out for replacement workstations.
Right. Okay. Brian, Shea, were you done or just getting started?
Yeah, that was the, the general question I had. And again, I just did not have an opportu, opportunity to dive more into this this afternoon.
Okay, now I'm going to go to Mr. Stivers. Sam?
Thanks. As I've commented before, I think this additional position for the assistant or whatever the title is here is a critical one. I see two issues here. One is simply a defensive position in terms of having another key person who can step in and keep things going if the director is whatever, out of service for a while. And the second piece is positive, the opportunity side of it. And there's a lot of things I think that need to be done and can be done by disposition. So while I share Lisa's, Chelsea's concerns about getting too far ahead of the new manager, it seems to me that if we fund this and the new manager comes in and says, well, I don't need it exactly that way, he's got the opportunity to either cut back on the budget or reposition those, those dollars in some way to, to deal with what he needs. I also was interested, I heard a conversation at the advisory committee meeting most recently here, about the possibility of hiring outside services to government and do an assessment. And as I followed the MTC meetings recently, that's exactly what they're doing. I think we've got an extraordinarily strong group here that's in the process of going through and doing the assessments of risks and opportunities. And that could be a huge positive input for the new IT director. So I think that we don't need to look outside so much for that. It's simply to rely on the exceptional skills that we have from the current MTC members. So I think this is going in the right direction. I think that funding, again, both for the new director and the assistant or whatever the position is, are the right things. And I have confidence that MTC and the new director will sort out the right way to use those dollars going forward. So it might be one of the different points.
So Matt and Angela, we're going to let you go in a, in a, in a second. You know, one of the benefits of the fact that we're not having town meeting until May 22 is that, is that we finally, we will have our IT director, manager on board. And I think it's, I don't, I think the sentiment here is strongly in favor of, of an approach that protects us. You know, and we've had chapter and verse from, from you all and Tom LaFlambe beforehand and, and from discussions that I'm, that we'll continue to have with advisory when you all go to your meeting. I think it's just critical that, that, that we find out exactly, without, obviously without pressuring him, where the IT manager stands on this. And again, it sounds like you've been communicating with him. It sounds like there's going to be additional communications tonight. I mean, the good news is we don't have town meeting till May 22. So there is some time built in to come to closure on exactly, if there's a united front from the MTC and from the new IT department on what the approach is. Does that make, am I making sense?
That, that's exactly right. And our whole goal with this budget is to empower the new director, not to handcuff the new director. And so, and absolutely, we've already reached out and started discussions with the new IT manager and about introducing to him the strategy, introducing, obviously picking up where Tom left off and to say, look, this is a partnership. This is not, the IT director doesn't report to us. He's a part of the group, part of the committee, part of our group, and we want to collaborate with him closely on developing both short-term and a long-term strategy. So our whole goal is to empower him and to work together on the best solution for Southboro. And yes, later tonight, we're going to be reviewing this budget with him and, and, you know, get his feedback, get, get his input to see if he has any additional thoughts.
Okay, I think if anything, it actually allows the person a, a level of flexibility and really allows them to play that more strategic role in the, the IT manager role. You know, it is in the budget as a placeholder right now, but I, I think it does provide the person... You know, it is in the budget as a placeholder right now, but I think it does provide the person with a true opportunity to do some of the things that I, I know Tom wasn't able to get to because he was so focused on the day today.
Okay. It is, it is seven o'clock. My understanding is that that's when you all have to go. And Kathy, you and members of our board and your committee can continue this, this discussion as well as some other discussions. But, but Angela and Matt, thank you very much. And I think we'll be in touch. This conversation doesn't sound like it's over.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Take care. So Kathy, you all have or have not taken a position on the 447-285 number that the MTC has put into the budget?
Have not. This number only was determined last night. So advisory has seen it. They've been emailing it, but they, we have not talked about it. So we were going to talk about it with you and then maybe later at our separate meetings. We have not talked about that number. But what advisory as a whole has agreed on is that there needs to be a recognition that we've got key man risk with a one-person IT department, which was proven out with Tom Laflambeau. Last year, advisory started talking about this quite in-depth and actually said to Tom, well, what happens if you leave? You get sick, whatever? And he said, he was, he wasn't worried about it. So we ended up agreeing, although grudgingly, on the part-time person. He was never able to find the part-time person. And so MTC told me last night, you're not going to find a part-time person. This market is so competitive right now. You won't find a part-time person to fill the 19 and a half hour slot that was in Tom's budget in November. So that's one point. Second, I don't know what the best answer is. That's why leaning on MTC here. Can we truly put money in the budget for consulting and expect that if something happens to the IT manager, that we can allow that outside firm to truly step into the shoes of that? So we don't have a five-month vacancy like we've had this past year? I don't know the answer to that. I also talked to Possibility today. He said, Kathy, don't forget, we need someone that understands the GIS system we now have. It's really valuable. It's a great tool and no one knows how to use it. Tom didn't have time to train people because he had so much else on his plate. And so he's, you know, according to Possibility, we really need a second person to help with that piece. Remember too, that the reason Tom was trying to hire the part-time person, he wanted help with some of the more routine things like Zoom, like when somebody's laptop has trouble and they call him. So Tom could be focused on more big picture stuff and he never had that chance either. So I don't know what the better answer is between putting a bucket of money in the consulting line versus hiring a second person. But we really don't want to end up with what we've had this past year. I know no one does on the screen. And so whatever we do, we need to make sure we at least have a plan that if something were to happen to the IT manager, that we know that we've got a plan to step into this.
All right. Any members of our board? I'm going to, I was going to go to Andrew Faff in a second because he said he had some additional information. But Lisa, Sam, Brian, or Chelsea, that's how you appear on my screen. So that's how I, any of you response to what Kathy just said before I go to Andrew? Yeah, Lisa, go ahead.
So another thing that I, that I want to mention, and again, I know it's, it's on all of our minds as well, is this has been a really tough year for a lot of the taxpayers that are at home. There are, I think there's greater need this year on a lot of the services such as youth and family. And even through the rent and mortgage program, I know I have been reached out to specifically by a ton of people that it's really tough, saying, I can't afford any tax increase. I'm, I'm, I'm at a crossroads here. So that's another, one of the things that's controlling me is that the town buildings haven't been open, for one thing. The taxpayers are struggling at home. We're adding positions. And while I appreciate there's a need and all of the need that's out there, the taxpayers have a need this year. And I think from my perspective, I, I am going to more be apt to support the taxpayers' need than anything else. I worry about the position a lot of families in this town are in right now. And I think we're going down a very dangerous path with a lot of the positions we're adding. Just my opinion, but I'm taking the phone calls. And I am acknowledging that there's a lot of people struggling right now. A lot of families have changed and a lot of families have a lot of hardships. So I'll just leave it at that. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else on our board before I go to Andrew? Yeah, Sam?
Yeah, quick question, Marty, from a process standpoint. If we actually fund the assistant position here, practically speaking, I think it's unlikely that's going to start on July 1st by the time the new manager comes in and figures out what he wants to do. From a practical standpoint, is there a lower number that is the one that we would likely need to fund for FY '22 to make this work? Assuming that somebody starts in September or something like that. We've done that in prior budgets as people have been phased in. Is that an adjustment we might consider making here?
I'm not sure how much of a process question that is, is a political question. I mean, I'm sure that we can do that. You know, I'm sure that we can, we talked about doing that with the, with the, with the police. We've talked about it a little bit with the Board of Health. You know, the difference is it, it puts, it adds a position in for sure. Or at least puts us on a path that a position in for, I think I got my fiscal year screwed up, fiscal year '23, the one that follows this upcoming one.
Right.
But, but I mean, I think, I mean, we're doing, we've done, we, we did that with police. We talked, we're talking about doing it with Board of Health. So I don't, again, I don't think it's a process question. I just think it's a, it's a, it's a political question about whether or not we do in fact want the position, but we want it phased in so that the budget number doesn't go up for this particular fiscal year. Okay? Anyone else? Brian or Chelsea? Yeah, Chelsea, go ahead.
So I just want to remind everyone that when our auditor was here, he told us we need to stop adding positions. So I think we really, as a, as a group here, need to think about, if we're going to add a position, where are we going to cut from somewhere else? If that's really what we want to do and we want to prioritize that way. And also to Lisa's point, running the rent and mortgage assistance program, I can't help people, we can't help people through that program with their taxes. So we can only do so much with that and the applications are coming in. So I just want everyone to be mindful of that too.
So we're going to discuss Board of Health shortly. The possible net decrease in their budget is much bigger than what we're adding with MIS, if that helps anyone. So Brian, to your question, the projected year-over-year increase by using Angela and Matt's budget is 3.64% now. But before, Marty, you turn to Andrew Faff, can we ask Tim Martel to speak? Tim is kind of advisory's technology guru, a resident. So I'd like to hear what he's got to say as far as the fundamental, fundamental issue as far as the risk the town is bearing with having a one-person IT department.
That's fine. Andrew, eventually we're going to get to you. You keep getting pushed to the back of the line.
Last but not least.
All right, Tim, go ahead.
I won't take long. Thank you. And thank you, Kathy. I had my hand raised. I was trying to be good and quiet. I just want everybody to understand that, you know, the times have changed and there, there needs to be more of a sense of urgency around how we handle our cybersecurity. NBC just came out with an article, I don't know if anybody saw it. One out of every, one out of six Massachusetts communities have been hit with ransomware and have had to pay out. That number is, is shockingly high. It's nothing, it's, it's so much more than it was a year ago, but it's nothing compared to what it's going to be a year from now. Hospitals, town governments, and schools are now the primary vector of attack for hackers because we have outdated laptops, endpoints, servers. They don't have up-to-date software. You don't have the proper vulnerability management tools in place. Okay? And you have a tax base that will pay out the money because they have no choice. Okay? Five days ago, the city of Lawrence was hit with a ransomware attack. They're working with the FBI right now to make payment, not, not to go after them, to make payment. Because there's nothing you can do once somebody clicks on the wrong link. And that's all it takes is one person. Your 911 system can go down. All of your town records can be corrupted. It's a big deal. It's happening, it's, it's, it's going to happen to us and our neighbors if we don't have the security expertise in-house soon. Okay, then that's, that's, that's all I'm going to say for now.
And is that, this goes back, I guess, to what, what presumably part of the conversation is going to be between the folks from the MTC and the new IT manager. And that is, is there a direct connection between funding an additional position and addressing what you just raised? In other words, can it be addressed without funding this new position? If it can, that's fine. Just the explanation as to why. If it can, what the cost of that would be in terms of not addressing other things or otherwise?
Yeah. And part, part of me wants to defer to what the MTC is going through. The other part of me wants to say, you know, it's, it's going to have to involve regionalization or a significant amount of outsourcing for, for all of this huge range of competencies we need to bring in-house. But, you know, I, either way, all of that knowledge and expertise is going to be funneled through your IT department. Right? And if that one key person walks out, you're starting from scratch. And, and, and that is really a terrible risk.
Okay. We're going to Andrew now.
Thanks, Marty. So I think mine's pretty short. So when we were talking about the laptops specifically, I just, you know, wanted to bring up. So there's, there is a one, you know, 13-page guidance from the state on CARES Act when it came out that lists potential municipal uses. It's basically one page of uses. And number four is accelerated telework capacity, infrastructure subscriptions for meeting services, and hardware laptops. So it's one of the itemized ones that's kind of already blessed by the state for laptops. We've already used the subscription for meeting services because we've been reimbursed for our Zoom accounts. But, you know, I think, you know, anyone that doesn't already have a laptop and I've heard of some cases that they don't, you know, we should order them tomorrow and put in for a reimbursement as far as that's concerned.
Okay. Marty, is Brian, Brian Ballantyne is out there as well. It's probably, Vanessa, it's probably worthwhile to bring Brian over as well.
Carla's here too as well, Marty.
Okay. Yeah, let's, let's get, let's get everybody at the party. I mean, particularly that, I mean, you know, this is, this is nothing new in, in the sense that, you know, the, the particular turmoil that the last year has brought is, is, is certainly heightened. But it's nothing new that on one hand, we've got concerns about, about, you know, the financial impact of spending decisions. And on the other hand, we have needs. And I guess my reaction, and it's been, been my reaction for a while, is that the, the cybersecurity need is not, is anything but hypothetical. I mean, it's very real. So, I mean, I, I guess it is nice to see that because of what we had done with the budget otherwise, that what we're, what we're talking about is a $40,000 gap. It, it, it seems unlikely, particularly given our experience getting an IT manager in place, that even if we went the route of, of identifying a new position, that we would have somebody in place, certainly not by the start of the fiscal year. I mean, it almost seems like it'd be relatively easy to structure spending for the IT department in a way that really didn't raise their budget for fiscal year '22. I mean, it seems, and, and, and that to me is the, is the, you know, the, the most palatable, palatable approach to this. Putting aside, you know, balancing it off on what's going on with the Board of Health. Just if there's a way purely in the IT department standpoint. I mean, I think there's no question in my mind, others may disagree, that a year from now, we're going to want two people in the IT, two permanent people in the IT department. It just seems unlikely that, that the town of Southboro is going to be able to survive, you know, going into the future with just one permanent position, permanent position. So the question is, is, and maybe this is for you, Tim. You know, what's your reaction to, to figuring out a way to not, you know, impose an additional $40,000 cost in the IT department in a way that, that brings somebody on a little bit more slowly targets for sometime in the fall? Obviously, you're talking about some number of months of risk, but is that one that, that, that you feel comfortable swallowing?
Honestly, I can't say I do. And it's the same, you know, it's the same feedback that we provided last year in our, in our report to town meeting, which is the, the, the risk. The, the risk is high. If it doesn't happen, then great. You know, it could work out for us, but, you know, I wouldn't recommend it. I mean, the average payment that's going out in the form of Bitcoin is $400,000.
Okay. Marty, to Lisa and Chelsea's point, that's a lot more expensive than adding a position here, I think. I think there's a real risk.
I would agree with that. Mark or you, or, or Brian? Because we'll get to a discussion, I think, I think this bleeds into a discussion about Port of Health and, and what the numbers might be looking like there. Because I agree with Lisa and, and Chelsea. Chelsea, I think all of us are loathe to go in the opposite direction of what we've been going in, which has been, which has been nice to see. We've been going down each meeting in terms of the overall budget increase. I, first of all, number one, in terms of the numbers that MTC has put forward tonight. Granted, it's, it came in late today, but does it, first of all, do any of those numbers raise concerns for you? Not in terms of the fact that, that they're higher and, and are funding an additional position, but in terms of, of, of the way they're broken down in the particular spending? Do any of those raise concerns for you?
So I'll start since Brian and Carla haven't touched their mute buttons. I, I think that, I, I don't know why we would look at trying to hire two people in the same classification, you know, and basically have someone managing somebody who's making virtually the same salary as they are. There is not a particular classification for another IT position, but we probably could do something, you know, which would, you know, put it more in the $75,000 range if you wanted to do a position. Keep in mind, we'd have to add another $25,000 to $30,000. I'll defer to Brian into the benefits line in order to accommodate that position. The only other thing that, that I will say is, and, you know, I, I think it's a little short-sighted to take out the workstations, assuming CARES will pay for them. I'm not convinced of that. I would defer to Carla, who has been, you know, who has conversations with the person at the state who holds the decisions on those types of things. But if we're going to put in certain assurances, I, I don't think that, you know, in this budget to try to do things, and I think that as, as Ms. Varner said, give us flexibility, give the new manager flexibility. Then I think you need to leave the, the 20, the $26,000 in there at this point.
Marty, can I comment on the first part?
Before you do, Kathy, I did maybe hear from Carla on that point.
Sure. Good evening. With regard to CARES covering laptops, just a little background, when Tom was here, I had said to him, you know, was the laptops that were, were their laptop spot this year? Any cares? Well, there was, and I don't know about the detail for next year, but last year it was in a budgeted rotation. So people were replacing, getting their desktops replaced with laptops. So in the instance, if we're replacing a desktop with a laptop and it's something that we, it's the, you know, an annual cost of six a year or whatever, I don't believe CARES would cover that. And I think it would create an additional, it's Ms. Malinowski's point, additional cost, you know, the next year, we're just going to ramp up. And for CARES, you know, again, they'll give us the money, but there is a chance that they'll take it back from us. So if it's a laptop that's above and beyond and to give to an employee that is going to be with the town, a permanent employee, that's great. I don't see a problem with that. But if it's replacing a desktop with a laptop, I think that's where it can get, you know, kind of muddy.
Okay. Kathy, what were you going to say?
So I wanted to go back to the first part of what Mr. Purple said as far as the salary range. So we talked about that last night. I got the salary ranges from Bessie Rosenbloom before the meeting I had with Angela and Matt. And I proposed BA2, which has a upper range of about 75. And they both very clearly said, you won't find someone for that. And they both very clearly said, you won't find someone for that as far as the type of person we're talking about. So that's why they put the 95 in there, was because they think it's going to take at least that to, to get the second person. So there was a reason that it was 95. And that's why we say put on that spreadsheet manager. And Vanessa, we realize there's no director in the SAP, so they'll get that fixed. So that's why it was called manager, because they didn't think BA2 was going to work as far as the band on that one. And that was the only other one that we thought would work, unless you just hire the person as an independent contractor, so it's not an employee. So you don't have to worry about where they fit on the SAP. And then as far as the second part with Carla and the laptops. So what got us talking about this again was Friday. So I attended a Board of Health meeting where they were talking about their budget. But in the meeting, they, Barbara Sperry mentioned that the reason that she has to go back and forth so much between Board of Health and the townhouse is because she's using her own personal laptop. And therefore, the software that she needs to do the accessory's work is not on that laptop. She has to literally physically go up to the townhouse to do the work on the computers there. So I don't know how many situations around town there are where people are using personal laptops. But we do know of others that have gotten laptops funded because you need a laptop to work remotely, generally speaking. So I still think it's worth the effort to do it, even if in the end, you know, it turns out that we're wrong, but if we don't try, we're certainly not going to get it.
Marty, can I add one thing to that?
Um, yeah, Lisa, sure.
Just briefly, I'm sorry. So I, I understand what you're saying about the laptops, Kathy, and working remotely. But I think we're putting a plan together for the townhouse to open back up and there'll be less working remotely. If that's the case, will CARES still cover them?
I agree, Lisa. So I think we should do it right now. So I agree, timing is, is essential. If we're going to do it, we should, you know, try to do it right now while we are still working remotely.
Thank you. Also, Marty, Jason has his hand up.
I'm looking, oh, there. I have to figure out where you are on my screen. All right. Yes, Jason, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So as Kathy noted, advisory hasn't talked about this, but I think it's important, because I haven't heard it yet, is, is one, the point Mark made about the benefits. And I think we're trying to balance, I don't think anyone here is questioning the need. Right? Is, we talked about advisory last week, so I'm kind of curious what's changed now in a week. Is, we had General Line, I don't think we took a vote, someone correct me if I'm wrong, that of trying to up significantly increase the consulting budget for IT. And I don't have the right, I don't know what the right number is. I know Mark mentioned 30 earlier. I think advisory, it started with at least 50. And I, and I see a consulting number in the budget here. But I, what I'm hearing is that that's going to be like a one-time assessment. And what, what, at least I proposed and happy to be turned down on this, but at least want to get on the table, is a significant increase to a consulting budget that would allow the new IT director, when he's ready, to go out and get, whether it's cyber expertise, desktop expertise, whatever expertise they need, and I'm sure the list is, is voluminous. Because, and the reason I'm pushing that so hard is, one, not creating a permanent benefited position with a pension for the town, but also allowing a push and pull of, we may need cyber expertise for three months, but we may need expertise B or C or D in constant monitoring after that for other things. And I know, I don't know enough about IT, but I know that from a consulting perspective, in looking at the fact that it took us at least five months to, it was basically going to be about five months once from time Mr. Laflamme submitted his resignation to filling the position. How do we think we're going to get someone that's actually qualified, regardless of whether you're 75, 85, 100, within the next five months? And if we're, we're kind of contradicting ourselves, we're saying we have an issue now, but we're going with an idea or a position that is probably going to take us another three, four, or five months to fill? And who knows how permanent that is? So I know the town used to outsource its IT, you know, prior to Mr. Laflamme holding the position. What I encourage everyone to think about is, I don't think this is about whether the budget goes up 10,000, 40,000, or 100,000, creating a permanent sustainable solution that isn't relying on one person or two people, but a team of people that have individual expertises to, to backstop this. And then my final comment goes back to the 40K for capital. That is not for workstations. That is not what capital planning voted on. We voted on infrastructure to support primarily cloud in some of the recommendations that were coming out of MTC. So if we plan to use that for workstations, I think it's going to require not only a rewrite of how the warrant is written, but, you know, revoke candidly of whether that's what the funds are supposed to be used for, because there was a lot of time spent on that. So I just wanted to throw that out, you know, for thought here is a way to maybe bring kind of the collective thoughts here together in terms of full-time expertise, consulting, but also I think everyone needs to consider what that 50K is that's in the MTC budget right now and whether that should actually be separately stated in the warrant. Because I think it's a one-time sort of thing, not an operational budget thing. At least how it was described tonight.
It, it is one time. And as far as what changed between last week and this week, Tim Martel talked to MTC, realized that they're in the process of doing the assessment that we recommended at last year's, last week's meeting. And therefore, they're doing that. That 50K is to basically allow them to have money to implement what they recommend once they finish their study. So that's, that's kind of what changed between last week and this week. Marty, do you realize John Butler's raised his hand to come into this?
Oh, that's who John is. Okay. Yeah, we can bring John over. But before I ask him to comment, I just, it just, and someone correct me if I'm wrong, that, that it appears that this is where we are. Number one, we don't know exactly what our new IT manager feels about this. Number two, it sounds like both among the Board of Selectmen and the Advisory Committee, there is, there is not unanimity on either of them, given the, the, the information we have right now. It's not clear whether or not CARES is going to cover, you know, some funding that we're taking out of the, the budget, I guess. So in some respects, it leads to a process question for me, because it doesn't feel like we're going to reach resolution tonight on this in terms of votes or otherwise. Mark, right now, the number that MTC has put forward is 447,000 and change, which is higher than the number that previously was included in the, in the budget breakdown. If we go to town meeting with a number lower than 447, can that, can, can the, the number be brought up to 447? Or are we precluding that by not including it in the budget?
The number can be brought up, but only if you take it from someplace else.
Okay, so effectively, it can't be brought up.
Effectively.
You have to, you have to, you know, find a Peter to rob from. That being said, if you included the higher number, obviously you could drop it down. Okay.
Or not spend it.
Tell you again, when we have to decide that by?
Well, you're supposed to be signing the final warrant a week from tonight, so it'd be great to have the final budget recommendations, everything else done. We've got to get this to the printer.
Yep, no, I understand. But the, so the drop dead date is, is the 20th?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Mr. Butler, are you there?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Yeah. Hey, John, how are you?
Hi, how are you? Yeah, I'm actually was asked to be here for a different topic, which is a bylaw modification, but I've had an interest in this. I can't emphasize enough Mr. Martel's comments. I think it's very easy to, to underestimate the degree of risk that the town is in from a cybersecurity viewpoint right now. The, and particularly with here today, gone tomorrow, staffing that we've had. I, the system, the, the structure of the IT management system that we have here now is broken. One person, we cannot do this with one person safely. Particularly now, the town becomes increasingly and almost invisibly gradually more and more dependent on IT. And it can be wiped out with the situation that you're in now. The second person, unfortunately, I think, is vital as a piece of backup knowledge of how Southborough is set up, how to, how to do a recovery. And so Mr. Martel's comments are exactly on, you could be faced with disaster quickly. So I think that you either have an entire dependence on a consulting, on a consulting route, or you need redundancy in-house. You can't have no redundancy in-house as you've been doing it and expect this to be safe. It is unsafe. Now, the other thing I would note is that the percentage you're spending on IT is extremely low for organizations of your size. So if, so if you, if we, even if we say that the town is 35% of the total fraction, the schools are 65, they're a little less than that probably still, but it's 35%. Organizations in this size class spend, you know, 5 to 7, 8% on IT. If they spend less than that, it's an indicator that your efficiencies are being lost because you're doing things that you should be doing with IT and you're not doing it. So your spending at, at these numbers is a third of what would be an index number for this class of organization, assuming, assuming that the schools are adequately funded on, funded on their self. So just as a frame of reference, you're underspending right now in this category. The last thing I would note is somewhat uncomfortable for you perhaps, but you, you, you cannot hire the level of expertise. The good news is you cannot hire the level of expertise you have on the MTC right now. Those people you cannot afford. And they are right. Okay? You, if, I hope that the director who comes in basically shares the views that they have put forward on strategy, because, because there's a difference between mid-level IT people from, in my experience in the industry, between mid-level IT people, which is what you can afford to hire, and senior level IT people, which is what you have on your IT committee. The MT, you're very fortunate to have that group right now. And if there is a disagreement, you have a problem on your hands that you need to figure out. It's not as simple as saying, well, the director has to do whatever the director thinks is right. But let's hope we don't face them. Let's hope that they are synchronized and in their strategy and they march together. But I just want to point out though, that you have a very talented group, none of whom you can afford to hire. And they are senior for a reason. And so their, their judgment needs to be very heavily weighed. That's, that's all I have to say on this. Thanks.
Great. Thank you, John. So, um, I mean, I, I hear what John's saying. I, I still very much want to hear from the new IT, and the right term is manager, right? That that's the salary administration plan. He's the manager. He's not the director, even though they're synonyms. Mark, I know you're going to tell me you don't like this idea, but my inclination would be that, that we maintain our options. At least my inclination would be to maintain our options by, and we don't have to decide till the 20th, by including the higher number in the budget, regardless of whether or not we end up supporting it. And, and now talking to the Advisory Committee, but also to the Board of Selectmen. It just strikes me, we've got to figure out to come, we've got to figure out a way to come to agreement on this about what we're going to do. The, I, it just, this is too important, an issue when we're talking about, you know, the, the, the cybersecurity for the town, for, for, you know, the Advisory Committee and the Board of Selectmen at town meeting to be pissing back and forth at each other about, no, you're overstating it, no, you're understating it, et cetera, et cetera. We've got to figure out a way to come to an agreed upon approach. Now, that being said, I don't have that agreed upon approach right now, but it just strikes me, this is a terrible disagreement to have at town meeting. We've got to have a united front. That's, that's, that's my view. You know, and if that means that, 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 you know, maybe there's some, some give on whether it's contracted versus a permanent position, whether or not there's some give on, on a position not starting as soon as we'd like it to start. But, but it just strikes me, we can't have the, the, you know, these two important committees disagreeing at town meeting on what is, you know, one of the most important items for the town to consider. At least that's my view. So I'm happy to let anyone else weigh in and, and, and see if they've got better ideas than I do at this juncture. The main idea I have is I'd be inclined to put the higher number in, regardless of whether or not we end up supporting it or something lower than it, just because I think it's important to have that flexibility between now and May 22nd. That's my view.
Marty, if I can?
Yeah, go ahead, Lisa.
So Mr. Dunnington, Ms. Buds, and Mr. Rooney haven't had an opportunity to weigh in, and I just wanted to make sure that everybody on advisory had the, the ability, if you don't mind.
So Andrew, Dave, why don't you start?
So I am, you know, generally inclined to support the, the new MIS budget because I definitely remember the discussion the Advisory Committee had about this during the last budget cycle, and it was the same recommendation was made. There's, you have a key man risk. You have a problem because you are overly reliant on one person. And we kind of felt around for a compromise solution that would save some money. So what we came up with was the, you know, half time, the part-time position, it was never filled. And then Tom left. And although you could say, well, nothing terrible happened while Tom left, I feel like we kind of skated in that there was no major incident while Tom left. And if there had been, like the ones that we're talking about, we'd be in a very bad situation. So, you know, the town's IT needs are only going to get, you know, more important over time, not less important over time. So, I mean, you know, I, I appreciate the, you know, tend to be very responsible with their spending, but the discussion to me, it just hasn't, it feels a lot like the discussion we had last time. We were looking for a compromise and it just didn't work.
Judy?
Yeah. I, I definitely think we need a second IT person, speaking as somebody who can barely turn on a computer. I think it's important and I support that idea.
Mr. Rooney?
Yeah, I have and I continue to support Mr. Martel's position. He's put a lot of time and effort into this and has articulated the risks perhaps more extensively with us. But he's done a lot of work on it and his recommendation carries the day with me.
Okay, so Kathy, maybe there is more, something closer to certainly consensus, if not unanimity on advisory on this. Does anybody else on the board, our board want to weigh in?
Can I just ask Tim a question?
Yeah, Chelsea, go ahead.
So we're, you're proposing a $95,000 position to do what? Cybersecurity?
I would like to say yes to that, but the reality is we'll, we'll never find a cybersecurity expert for 95K.
Right.
It's, it's just not possible.
So is that our biggest risk right now in your mind?
Our biggest risk right now is cybersecurity. And then down the road, based upon what the Board of Health does, it will be HIPAA compliance.
So at some point, are we going to have to make a decision to outsource cybersecurity?
Most likely, but you'll still need that bridge between the town and the managed service provider who's going to bring this expertise to us.
So is it fair to say that that should be our number one priority when our new manager starts? Is to figure out a plan for cybersecurity, which may, may not involve a second full-time person?
I, I think figuring out this problem is our number one technology problem to solve.
But Tim, following up on Chelsea's questions, it would, would, you know, and this is, this is, I want to frame it as a compromise, but, but just as a, as a, as a bridge forward and maybe even a better way forward to, to, you know, even put some additional money on the contracting side. And again, where's our, we've got to get our IT manager part of this discussion, but maybe even put more money on the contractual side for somebody on the cybersecurity side to get them on quicker with a higher level of expertise and worry about the, the, the backfill, if you will, of a, of a more permanent second position later, but focus on the backfill, if you will, of a, of a more permanent second position later, but focus on the contractual service to deal with the cybersecurity issues more immediately.
It, it's, you know, what risk is more palatable to you, right? If we have one key man and something happens, that's a problem. Maybe nothing happens and we have an IT director for the next ten years, in which case it would have made more sense to put our, our assets in, in the consulting service. So it's, it's, it's hard to predict the future.
But Tim, that wouldn't be a cybersecurity risk, that'd be an IT risk. In other words, I'm focused, the, the, what we've been talking about is that the primary concern is a cybersecurity concern. I mean, there's always, I mean, we saw with Tom Flamm leaving. There's a, there's a risk if, if, you know, you're the, the person in charge of IT when you've got a really small IT department leaves. I understand that. But from a cybersecurity standpoint, i- i- is there a difference, or even is there an advantage to bringing in a contracted cybersecurity expert in the short term to address the needs rather than, and we know it's going to take a while, and I think you and John Butler are in agreement that we're not going to get as high a level of cybersecurity expert with a permanent position as we are if we focus on somebody from a contracted standpoint that provides that expertise. So is that the better, from a cybersecurity standpoint, solely is that the better approach?
I would say so, but bear in mind that any managed service provider who's going to work in partnership with your organization is going to need a counterpart onsite in order to be effective. You're, you're, you're never going to be able to affect, and, and there are people who may disagree with me, you're never going to be able to completely eliminate your internal IT group.
Yeah, and Marty, if I can elaborate on that, you, you're never going to have a consulting company come in and do the integration on the end, end user and, and the servers. You're going to need your local department. You're going to need somebody locally that can do what that consulting company recommends. And right now with one person, and, you know, not really any part-time help, you're not going to have any bandwidth to make any improvements. They're just going to be drinking from the fire hose, trying to handle the day-to-day. You're never going to be able to do these kinds of improvements in order to, one, cybersecurity or anything else. So you need that extra set of hands, one, from the redundancy, which is just common sense, and two, if you want to improve your cybersecurity, you need both the consulting expertise to give that local team that, you know, we're honestly not paying enough money to know, you know, what they need to do, and then they need to go and implement it and monitor it. So you need both pieces, or you're just, you know, either one is not going to work without the other.
Marty? Yeah, Andrew. Excuse me, Sam, sorry, Chelsea, I jumped in. I apologize for doing that. Were you all set?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, go ahead, Sam.
All right, just to reinforce the point John Butler made, and I've made previously, I think Tim and others are right in that, you know, finding a cybersecurity expert is way beyond our budget, but in fact, we have one. Matt Probst is head of application security for Mackenzie and Company. You're not going to find somebody like that out there in the market. You'd never be able to afford that. And there are others on MTC who have similar experience that we can rely on. So it seems to me that we've got the, the internal resource there that the new IT manager and anybody else we hire in IT can use as a phenomenally effective resource to help us understand, plan, and, you know, work, do what we need to do to develop internal processes to reinforce security as well as a variety of other things. So I think that, for me at least, is a great comfort that we don't have to go out and pay a million dollars a year for the, you know, world's greatest cybersecurity expert who's already volunteered to help us. And so again, I think that's an important aspect here that allows us to get a lot of leverage out of the money we're spending. And again, it's not just cybersecurity, but the other MTC members have equivalent experience in other areas that I think can be hugely helpful to us. So I think we're well set with the two bodies in terms of redundancy, and then some contract money potentially to fill in other expertise that we need along the way.
All right, thanks, thanks, Sam. Mark, when, when does, when does our new IT guy start? Is it this Monday?
A week from today.
A week from today?
Twenty.
Okay, so he is available to be at our meeting. A week from tonight.
Can I add one last thought, Marty?
Yeah, Lisa.
So, Tim, I completely agree with you about cybersecurity and, and it being a priority and how we get there. Again, for, I'm still concerned about the long-term effects as far as benefits. Is there a way to be able to utilize some of what are surrounding communities? We've talked regionalization a lot. Is there an opportunity to share within another community, someone in their IT department that may have that expertise to be able to work with, you know, somebody, a contractor on the outside for cybersecurity? I, I don't know. I don't know what the answer is, but it's, I, I understand the need that's there, but it's just how, how to fund it to get there? And, and is this a possibility? And maybe it's already been explored? I don't know. Mr. Purple, do you know if, if an opportunity to, to possibly job-share, regionalize, whatever has been explored for this?
I don't think anything's been explored yet, Lisa. Again, you know, once the, once Jason starts next week, obviously he's coming in with a heavy lift and a quick lift on, on some of this stuff. Just to Marty's, I'm sorry, just to jump to Marty's point earlier, I, I'm not, I'm, I'm, I'm not disagreeing with you, Marty, with the approach that we want to take with this and put in that higher number. And, and then we can have the flexibility to do, you know, what we need to do, it's just a matter of where you want to carry the money. And if we want to maintain flexibility, I think you need to put the twenty-six thousand back in for the replacement equipment as well.
Lisa, MTC last night did say they are looking at regionalization, including the schools, to, you know, pick up with this. When we talked about this with the schools when advisory met with them, as far as whether they'd be willing to start talking about a consolidation of the technology departments. And they didn't say no, but it was, you know, first time we asked the question. So they definitely are looking at some type of consolidation of resources, either within the town and or outside the town.
And just a point, just to point out to Kathy's point, that, you know, we've asked that question several times since I've been here, whether it's technology, whether it's facilities, and there's always been a, an openness for the school to have a conversation, but the timing has never seemed to work in terms of, of doing something. So, you know, we did have that conversation again, this time when we had the vacancy with the school, and they've gone ahead, they've hired a new director over there. So hopefully there can be some, you know, a relationship built with our new position and their new position, and then we can see if something, you know, something good can come of that.
Yeah, and you know, Mark, my point is too, that, you know, so it took us five months to find the, the new director that we have. So maybe during this next five months, as we kind of look at what the best, best path is, we could explore this as well. It's just another option to get what we're looking for and what we need. Thank you.
The one thing we could do, Board of Selectment and Advisory, is to put the twenty-six back in, as Mark has requested. That doesn't preclude us, though, from going ahead right now and asking for money for laptops, including the one that Barbara Sperry needs for Board of Health, because we're talking, that's fiscal year twenty-one. And we need to do it right now if we're going to do it, per Lisa's point, because the closer we get to coming back in-house, then you lose argument that you need the laptops to be able to work remotely. So I don't think the two are mutually exclusive. And if we don't, and if, when the IT manager gets on board, he says, well, we don't really need them because we got them with CARES Act, whatever, then you just don't spend it. And it goes back into free cash. So that's going to raise it, but it's going to raise that for twenty-seven, another twenty-six thousand, but that would, that would work too.
Yeah, no, I agree with you, Mark, that, that it makes sense to put that in, but I also agree with Kathy that, that we should be asking whenever we can.
And I, and I don't disagree, and I would defer to Carla, she's the one that's got to sign the form, but I also want to make sure, I know that, that in, in talking with Kathy, advisory is backstopping a lot of financial obligations in terms of Board of Health with the reserve fund, assuming that CARES or the Recovery Act or any other money doesn't cover it. So I just want to make sure that, you know, when snow flies again next winter, we have enough there to, to cover any overages, and we're, we're due for another snowy winter.
So Lisa.
Get another level of uncertainty to, to throw into the mix.
Lisa, we're also concerned about the, I mean, you know, Eric, we want the year-over-year increase to be reasonable, look like inflation, et cetera, so that we feel like we have provided a increase that people can absorb without too much pain. But, you know, that is going to be dwarfed by any check we write for a ransomware attack. But one thing we did do last year when we were concerned, we did take a look at the town's liability policy, and we do have cyber insurance in there. I don't know what it would cover, because you would think all the towns do, and if they're writing these big checks, maybe it only covers a little bit, and when you start talking forty million dollars, you're way outside what the policy's limit is. I don't know, but we do have some cyber insurance coverage in our liability policy. We do know that.
Yeah, that, 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 I find cold comfort in that.
Okay, well, Marty, you're the attorney, so read that policy and tell us what.
Okay, you're right, right. Give me a couple of minutes. Well, wait a minute, what about Rooney?
Sorry, Mr. Rooney, and Mr. Dennyton, so you guys can, it's, it's Andrew Dennyton that asked about it, and so I just know we have it. I don't know what it truly would cover, because you never know sometimes until you actually need it, right? And then.
That's, 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 that's cold comfort to be saying, well, we're covered for insurance if this, you know, awful thing happens. So, all right, I, I, just my read, my read earlier was that there was a little bit less consensus on advisory. It seems like you guys, if not unanimous, are pretty strong in favor of, if not the exact numbers that MTC has come up, come up with, something close to that. I think from our standpoint, and, and Brian, Chelsea, Sam, Lisa, tell me if you disagree, is to, is to, for purposes going forward, and going forward for us means in the short term, next Tuesday, is to put the higher numbers in the budget, just understanding that doesn't commit us to anything right now, but it just gives us flexibility that we don't have to rob from, from Peter if we decide that, that, that Paul, being the IT department, needs that money. Does that make sense?
Yep.
Say it, okay. Mark, does that make sense to you? I think that's where we are. I'm not sure if it makes sense to you, but that's where we are.
I'm just looking, I'm just looking at Brian, because, you know, we've got a, Brian's got to go in and finagle the figures and everything and that. So we'll take, we'll take what MTC is moving forward with the addition of the twenty-six.
But you could probably get rid of that five, because we don't know what that five is, that'd help a little bit, that extra five.
Five is, I'm looking for, Jason Malanowski shut his screen off, but I was just wondering, I know that the, the, the cloud and the server infrastructure, those forty thousand dollars, but there was a recur, reoccurring five thousand dollars a year for the first three years, something along those lines, that may have something to do with it, I'm not sure. So, but if it doesn't need to be there, it'll come out.
Okay, so are we now ready to talk about the Board of Health?
All right, is, is Brian okay with taking ClearGov out?
He wanted it out.
He recommended it.
He wants it out.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, I think we're okay with, with ClearGov coming out for the main module, Chelsea, but the capital module we are leaving in. So there's, there's four thousand dollars of that line item that we'll go back in.
Mark, can I ask on ClearGov, now is, is that a yearly contractual or is that a multi-year contract for ClearGov?
I'm going to let Brian handle that.
You're muted, Brian.
I think his lips are saying annual.
Okay, so it is annual, so there is, there is no impact if we cancel in the middle of, okay, thank you.
All right, are we ready to move on to Board of Health? There's new information from the Board of Health as well, or at least new proposals for, we've had, we've had folks from the Board of Health in a number of different times and have, have sought to come up with a, a sort of a tiered approach. Kathy, you and I had a conversation this afternoon, and do you want to recount where you think you all are in terms of a comfort level on the Board of Health? Does that make sense?
It does.
Okay.
So the Board of Health met last Friday, and I joined their meeting. I had sent, I've been talking to Mary Lou all along, as has Chelsea. So there's been, you know, emails going back and forth, you've seen some of them, you haven't seen all of them. So I had sent her an email before that meeting and suggested, and asked if they would consider a couple of things at that board meeting, which they did. So what they voted on last Friday, and let's take each position one at a time, so just to refresh your memories, they would like to have three positions that are currently part-time be made full-time as of July first. The health director's position, the nurses' position, and the admin position, which they would also like to upgrade to be a one from what it is now, so going from step four to step five on the SAP. In addition, they want a ten thousand dollar scanner because they believe they, they've got HIPAA concerns that they believe that might address. And then they want to increase their inspectional services line item for food and subject inspections from a fifty to sixty-two. So there's five things that are pretty big jumps from year to year that they had, had previously voted on. So what they decided, or what they voted on last Friday was the following. They are going to, they've removed, they're going to remove from their budget for fiscal year twenty-two, the money that would be an increase from fiscal year twenty-one for two of those three positions, the director and the nurse. So they have voted to keep those two line items flat from fiscal year twenty-one to fiscal year twenty-two. With the caveat, and this is a big caveat, and before I get anybody excited on advisory, I made it clear advisory has not voted on this, this was one person saying that she would take this to advisory. So after we meet, we're going to talk about this at our separate meeting. So the caveats are that we would be able then to request CARES Act funding for some of the actual cost that they would incur that would exceed what was in their budget. We know the CARES Act right now is going to extend through at least twelve, thirty-one, twenty-one, as far as being able to ask for reimbursement for COVID-related expenses. So the expectation would be they would be able to at least ask for the difference between what they actually spend on those two positions, which would be full-time positions, and what's in their budget through the CARES Act. Advisory have been talking about that for a couple of months, and so we thought that would be a way to truly leverage some of this CARES Act money, money that we know is available to Southborough, which is quite a bit still left there. Then what I said is that I would take back to advisory and ask advisory to vote to backstop any cost that they would incur in that budget for fiscal year twenty-two that would not be reimbursed by CARES Act, which means that if the CARES Act or any of the funding doesn't extend beyond January first of twenty-two, then we'd be backstopping six months of that additional cost with a reserve fund transfer. So those were the caveats. So the vote they took was dependent on that happening, that advisory would have to vote to do that. We haven't done, done that yet. We've only voted so far to backstop the additional costs that they're incurring right now for six, thirty, twenty-one. Is Carla still, is she still here? So I don't know if Carla has applied for six, thirty, twenty-one yet or not, but we're expecting that to come to fruition, since we don't think we'll be, have, we don't expect to use the reserve fund for six, thirty, twenty-one. But six, thirty, twenty-two, we don't know of any ability to access CARES Act, et cetera, at least currently beyond one, one-twenty-one. So the backstop actually is a little bit more meaningful as far as that goes. So that is what they voted on last Friday, which would reduce their budget by a pretty significant amount. The two issues that were not quite there yet on are the admin position right now that Barbara Sperry occupies. She is twenty-four hours on the Board of Health budget, and she's sixteen hours on the assessors' budget. So I've talked to Paul Sibelli twice about this. He is saying that he is going to be extremely flexible again with the Board of Health, like he has been for this past year, and allow Barbara Sperry to work pretty much what she's needed to work for the Board of Health, including physically being at the Board of Health, which is really important to the Board of Health. They'd like to have their office open nine to five, five days a week, which would involve Barbara being down there, which is what caused a discussion about the laptop to come up when she explained why she had to keep running back and forth between the townhouse and Board of Health. He said, that's easy to solve, where you get a town laptop and you get hooked up to, to the servers, and you should be all fine as far as being in access software. So Paul Sibelli is offering to be flexible again. I've talked to Carla about this, and I, she can weigh in here if she disagrees with this. And she has said that if the Board of Health keeps twenty-four hours for Barbara in their budget, sixteen assessors out, he said, yeah, let's say, to make up a number, thirty-eight hours is what Barbara spends on Board of Health, then that excess time gets allocated to the Board of Health budget, so they basically overspend it, they go negative, that she would be able to apply for CARES that she would be able to apply for CARES Act funding for that overspend from July first to December thirty-first. The Board of Health originally thought that it should be the reverse. Let, let a supply for with the assessor's budget. And I said, well, it's going to look a lot more like COVID if it's the Board of Health making that application instead of the assessor's office. Carla agreed with that. So I, I think that, I, I thought we were there as far as that agreement goes. So I sent Mary Lou an email this afternoon just going over that. She agreed with everything in the email as far as being factual, but there's still a hesitation on formally removing the sixteen hours from their budget that they've got in for Barbara Sperry right now. They also want to increase her staff to be a one. And I said, I checked with Betsy Rosenbloom. Betsy said it's their, it's their call for doing that. So that's really between the Board of Health and Paul Sibelli as far as raising her a staff. So that's definitely not advisory's call. So that's out there too. So that's not done yet. I, I still think it's possible to do, but it's not done yet. And then the scanner. We have proposed that they take that out of their budget completely and allow Jason and MTC to basically come back with a recommendation to make sure that we are HIPAA compliant throughout the town, not just their youth and family services, fire, police, et cetera. It's not just them. Rather than just buy a ten thousand dollar machine that we aren't convinced is going to necessarily solve the problem. And they, they're not saying no to that. They just want to be convinced that their problem, they think they've got a problem with HIPAA, I think, at this point as far as compliance goes. They're worried about people accessing information they shouldn't. So I think that that is a possibility that that's going to be taken care of too. But that hasn't happened yet either as far as them voting formally to take that ten thousand dollars out of the budget. They said they're willing to do it. They know that Jason starts April twentieth, and so we've got a little time. I mean, this may be an amendment on the floor of town meeting, because by the time Jason gets here and with Mark's deadline to get to the printer, that may not be able to happen. But we're hoping that it will happen because advisory doesn't think that that's necessarily the solution to what they perceive as a pretty big problem. So that's where we are tonight.
All right, I think I understood most of that. Carla, I guess first you and then Mark, I'm going to go to you and or Brian about what, what, what that, what, where this might put the number. But, but Carla, what, what sort of level of confidence do you have on the, the cares or otherwise being able to fund some of the expenses that Kathy was talking about?
So to answer Kathy's question, I don't anticipate using the reserve fund or the Board of Health to have to use the reserve fund for the director or the nurse in twenty-one. We may need to fund Paul Pazinski's small contract from, he's working six hours a week. We may need to reach out to reserve fund for that. In twenty-two, if Barbara is working at the Board of Health, I would feel comfortable putting those hours in, doing more at the Board of Health than the assessors. I'd feel comfortable putting those in for reimbursement. And again, with the director and the nurse, the, the same thing, above what is budgeted, whatever the budget ends up being, would most likely be covered by cares.
And, and it would most likely be covered through the end of the calendar year or, or for the entire fiscal year? Or is that uncertain?
Right, well, so there's kind of, you know, with cares, it's really complex between FEMA and cares. And right now, they're, they're kind of hedging on what funding bucket is going to cover what type of expenses right now. Right now, cares is open until the end of December. FEMA has no deadline as of right now, but they, they talk about with the vaccines ramping down in September. So we just don't know where FEMA is going to be with that. So as far as I know, through December, we can utilize cares. I don't know on the FEMA side how long we're going to have access to those funds.
Okay, thanks. Before I, I looped him up first to the Board of Selectment, Mark or Brian, given what, what, what Kathy and, and now Carla have said, what, where would that put in terms of the, 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 the number we've been working on for Board of Health? And, and the, you know, the delta between what we've been working on and they've been asking, how, how much does that shrink that? And come closer to the, to the number that we've been focusing on?
I'll, I'll let Brian have that question, but I had one other question just for Carla as to whether or not, and, and she may not be able to answer this, but if the governor lifts the declaration of emergency for the pandemic, you know, I'm not sure how that changes cares in FEMA. So that may be something else that we need to consider, and Carla, you may want to check with your friend at the state.
Okay.
Oh, you're going to say Carla should check with the governor, get Baker on.
Well, I'll check with him too.
I want to check with the governor. We have Vanessa call, but.
But we, we have cares, you know, through December, you're right, the declaration of emergency is, is, is a little bit something that could sway that. But yeah, it would definitely affect the FEMA side, Mark, if that, if that emergency is, being lifted.
Okay. Brian, do you want to give a shot at the numbers?
I could take a shot, but it would be a wild guess.
Because I. Try to make it less wild. I mean, it's.
I haven't seen their, I haven't seen their detailed numbers in a while, since January, I think, because of the back and forth. So we'll have to get together with them in the next day or two and just kind of get some more detail on that.
Brian, I sent them the spreadsheet from last year, I'm at a fiscal year twenty-two, and I filled in everything they've already asked for, for fiscal year twenty-two, except for the things we're talking about. So she's got that and she knows that they need to get us this pretty quickly. I mean, I've got a rough idea of what it is, but let them do it. Marty, there's one other fact too that I think people will want to consider and then I'll shut up. There is a three hundred thousand dollar, and Mary Lou's made sure I get this right, shared services grant that's been applied for by the four towns, Westboro, Northboro, Southboro, and Boylston. I believe Mark has, has said today that they expect to hear tomorrow about whether we're going to get it. It's also a recurring grant, and the grant clearly includes money, they're, the four are considering money for nursing. So there may be some extra money that we'll have access to that will help fill the Board of Health needs too for the next year. We won't know until we get it and then the four towns get together and decide how to spend it, but that's, that's out there too.
Okay, thanks Kathy. Chelsea, I'm going to start with you on our board. Any questions or comments?
I'm just not sure how the reserve fund could be used as a backstab, backstop for this amount of money starting January first, if that's, if that's what, what is being proposed. I think that, that could take away from if something else happens in another department. So I think I'm still with figuring out the shared services grant that Kathy just explained and committing to doing a fall town meeting once kind of things settle down and the new nurse has a chance to get, get going. I did, I did work with Mary Lou this week on identifying some one-time things that could potentially be outsourced. So her, Carla and I are trying to see if there's some things that can, that can be done that doesn't need to be, that does not need to be her full-time staff, so that they can kind of get the infrastructure done and then take it from there. So, you know, just, I think they, they have a lot on their plate, so we're just trying to help them utilize the funding that's available.
Okay, thanks Chelsea. Brian?
Thanks. So that three hundred thousand dollar grant with the four communities, I assume that's three hundred thousand total to be split among the four communities, correct? And is that, is that an even split that we know, or is that dependent upon each community's budget, et cetera?
I think it's, I think it's based on the needs, Brian. So for example, I know that some communities would rely more on the nursing than the inspectional services pieces of it. I know that, you know, Mary Lou has commented, I think, at, in discussions with this board is that if they have the forty-hour nursing position, they may not need as much nursing assistance from the grant. But I believe it is up to three hundred thousand dollars each year for the next three years. The one other thing I just want to add since, since I, I kind of have the floor, is there are, you know, the one complicating thing, and I did talk about this with Kathy earlier today, is the Board of Health has put, is, you know, has got contracts in place, you know, for forty-hour public health nurse position, and they're getting a contract in place for forty-hour health director. And so, you know, those will become obligations of the town, you know, at, at some point. So, you know, those, those things could complicate some of the bridge approaches that I think that Kathy's laid out.
And I guess I would just make an overall observation, Marty really kept, you know, stealing from the comment you made in the last discussion that we had, is, you know, this is, you know, we had a lot of discussion with, with Board of Health and Mary Lou has been to a couple of our meetings on it and they're not here today. I really hope that we can come to a consensus among everybody at town meeting on this one as well. I think that would be, that would be great. And I don't know, does Board of Health have meetings upcoming themselves? Or, or beyond what they met on Friday? Are there still things that they're considering?
They said they could, Brian, if they needed to. There's not one scheduled between now and when Brian needs to get the warrant to the printer, but they said they could if they need to.
Okay.
This is where Zoom meetings help a lot, you know?
So, so Kathy, just on, on that, if there's not, if, if, if they're not meeting again, what's, what's, I mean, what you described seemed at, at least fluid. How is they're going to get, how is some concreteness going to come to that if Board of Health is not going to be gathering?
So tonight after we meet, advisory is going to meet separately and we're going to discuss the reserve fund backstop. If we vote to approve that, and then I will call Mary Lou one way or another and let her know that because their vote, they voted. So they voted to take those two things out of the budget and go flat for fiscal year twenty-two. So that part just depends on advisory voting to do the backstop. As far as the other two things, I still think they're pretty close, so they would have to meet again to, to vote. They were pretty close to voting for those two Friday, and then they got a little nervous and did. So I, I think that they would be willing to meet one more time to reconsider those two things also.
Because procedurally, they're, they are the ones who will plug the number into the warrant, correct?
Yep.
So what, what is their number right now? Do we know?
They are in the process of changing, so we don't know because they are going to change it for the first two positions if advisory votes tonight. So that's why I sent her the spreadsheet, so it would help her put it together. So she's got that, she acknowledged she has that. And then I just got to call her tomorrow and say, yes, either advisory did vote to, to do the reserve fund backstop or they didn't. And if we did, they're going to change those two numbers and resubmit that. And then I was going to talk to her again about possibly trying to get the scanner out of there, letting the, you know, it doesn't belong in their budget anyway. It belongs in the IT budget, like every other piece of equipment. Or on the capital plan. So I've told her both of that. It should be one or the other, but it really shouldn't be in their budget. They moved, I digress a little bit, but they moved their wireless telephones out of that, so she understood why that should be moved. So we'll see. So I don't think it's quite that fluid. I think we got to answer the reserve fund question tomorrow after we vote tonight. And then once more, ask if they won't reconsider keeping Barbara the way she is now at twenty-four sixteen and moving these, just deleting the scanner completely and letting Jason and MTC decide what we need to do to make sure that we're HIPAA compliant, whatever that takes.
Okay, that doesn't feel fluid to you. Okay, that's encouraging.
I'm sorry. Marty, can I ask Kathy a question on that line?
Yeah, go ahead, Lisa.
So Kathy, I would assume irregardless of what position advisory takes, they're going to have to meet to discuss what number they're going to put in their budget. So I think it, it's pretty fair to say they have to have a meeting between now and next Tuesday when Mark means the number.
Well, except they voted, Lisa, they voted to make those two changes. I think they think that if they didn't change anything else, they wouldn't meet, they would just change the numbers. Because they voted to do that. So I don't know that they got to meet to confirm the numbers that they agreed to change. So I don't think they're planning on doing that. I think the, the plan is to change those numbers and resubmit and then meet only if they're going to have to vote on something else.
Okay, so that, so just so I'm clear, so the, the, the positions being covered by funds from twelve thirty-one, they voted to support that irregardless of the reserve fund transfer. Is, is that what you're saying?
No. They just want to know that those positions are going to be funded one way or the other. They don't, they, they support trying to use leveraging CARES Act. And so they understand that most likely cares will pay for those positions through twelve thirty-one. In that, then the next six months is the one that's really in question because right now we know of no funding for those next six months. And so that's where the reserve fund transfer really matters to them. So, that answer your question?
No. Well, yes, yes, my question, it, it, it brought up another question. So, so what did they vote on as far as their budget? They voted on these, these positions being fully funded through their budget at town meeting is, is.
They voted to basically end their budget to, that would be printed in the warrant, to take the full-time directors
Yep.
cost, or take the direct health director's cost down to what it was when Paul Pazinski was in that position for fiscal year twenty-one. So whatever that number was, which is pretty low.
Okay.
So that's going to save seventy thousand dollars right there. And then they are going to do the same thing with the nurse. They had a part-time nurse in fiscal twenty-one, they're just going to leave it the same. So that's going to save another twenty thousand. So it's going to save, those two alone, we're going to save a hundred thousand dollars.
Okay, I'm good. Thank you.
All right, Sam, I skipped over you.
Yep. Thanks. I, first, I think filling these positions effectively permanently is critical. I am in support of the direction that Kathy is suggesting there. I think that one thing that's still a wild card here, but shame on us if we can't figure out how to take advantage of it is the ARPA stimulus bill that was signed last month. And Southborough has, according to the state at least, almost three million dollars allocated to us for various things and that. So I think there's likely to be a fair hunk of money out there that if we're careful and aggressive at the same time, we ought to be able to find ways to fund this. So I'm prepared to make that bet and in order to get the staffing that we need for this. That's where I am.
All right, thanks, Sam. I think that, that, that finishes up on our board. Kathy, if you want to touch base with any of the members of yours.
So I'll start with Andrew D.
Well, this is, I mean, this is very new. I don't think I knew all of this information before this meeting, but you know, my concern is that this is a, you know, an indirect vote to talking about being careful about creating new full-time positions. This is creating several new full-time positions. And unlike the MIS budget where there was a baseline from the prior year's discussion of, we thought this was a risk. And it's been kind of considered over time and then implemented. This has all happened very, very quickly. And, you know, I'm concerned that you, if you also, we don't know what unanticipated expenses might come in the next fiscal year, fiscal year twenty-two. And if we, you know, in, if we, if we go along with what, what this is, my concern is that for, for a fiscal year twenty-three, then any, if, if we want to reevaluate that, that would be seen as a cut in that budget. So there's still a lot to think about on this for my end.
One thing that's important that advisory lets BOs know is that we did vote to support the addition of the full-time health director. We did not, but we did not agree on making the nurse full-time, nor did we agree on making the admin full-time. So we agreed on one out of three as far as doing this. This is just a way to try to leverage the CARES Act to fund these positions. So we do agree that the full, the health director should be full-time. So that was a, I think unanimous vote unless someone corrects me as far as that position goes.
I guess what I'm not understanding is I thought when we, when advisory met and we considered this, we were, came to a consensus to support one of the three positions long-term. This is kind of an indirect way of supporting three of the three positions long-term. Unless I'm not understanding it correctly. Unless I'm not understanding it correctly.
The Board of Health is clearly going to go to town meeting with these three positions being full-time, regardless of what either one of us does, whether Advisory Board is. I mean, we, we can certainly disagree with it at town meeting and not support it, but they're going to ask the town for three full-time positions in their budget if this compromise is not met. And I agree with Brian Shea. I think that we really, really need to try to get this resolved before town meeting, because it's gonna be extremely confusing at town meeting to try to explain this.
No, I think Brian is absolutely right on that. Other, other Advisory folks wanna weigh in, Kathy?
AP?
No, I think, I mean, I think this is a good compromise. I think, you know, I'm all for using as much CARES Act as possible, as all you, as everybody knows. This solves for that. And, and we don't even know if CARES actually would be extended through the full fiscal year, which it might be. So this gives us the option. And, and, and if we're worried that we don't have enough reserve fund, then maybe we increase the reserve fund. But I think certainly keeping the budget where it is. And Andrew, to your point, we'd only be supporting, because Barbara would still be part-time with this, we wouldn't be considering it a full-time. We're just allocating more time one to the other.
Tim?
I don't have anything new to add. I think Andrew summed it up pretty well.
Judy?
Well, I was the voice that argued to support from the very beginning. And I brought up the, my concern, or my thought, that is if we'd had an active Board of Health at that time, we might have gotten through COVID more easily. And I still feel that way, that we need to, need to make them strong. I mean, we've, we've, in Advisory, we've achieved some consensus, but we really need to support them strongly so that if the next COVID comes along, maybe we'll be better prepared.
Jason?
I have a few, a couple of questions. What number? Is, assuming Kathy, Advisory votes on the plan in support of the reserve fund transfer through the end of next fiscal year, can someone clarify the exact number that Board of Health is going to bring to town meeting?
I don't think anybody has that number.
So?
I do. I just hate to step on their toes by saying, I, I've done the math. I just, I didn't want to say, Mary Lou, here's what I think it is. I wanted her to put it in. So I wanna wait and let them come back with what they think it is. I, I've got an idea of what it should be.
Yeah, I, I just think it's dangerous for Advisory to be, Advisory is supposed to review positions.
Well, that's what I'm trying to do. Let's wait and see what they say.
Yeah, so I, my line of thinking is along the lines of what Andrew Dennington outlined. So I'm not gonna repeat anything that he said. But I will echo that if we're looking to accomplish what Mr. Shea has outlined, and I agree with that sentiment, we already voted in favor of a public health director. So we would be potentially sacrificing three months of CARES funding, at least Advisory did, of CARES funding for that. You know, that gets them a long way to, to doing leadership, in developing leadership for that department to come up with a longer plan, longer-term plan. So, you know, I would be open to that. I am not open to having the reserve fund be a checkbook for an entire fiscal year. I think it goes against the entire fundamentals of what a reserve fund is supposed to be. And I think we're doing a disservice to every other town department that we all have an obligation to serve by potentially earmarking a piece before, before the fiscal year has even begun. That's supposed to be for things we don't know about going into a fiscal year. I think this year was different with our vote to support holding it over till 6:30, because I think it was very clear that CARES Act was gonna cover that, and I think there was very, very little risk, you know, with that vote. And I would also say that, to Sam's point about the new package that came out, yeah, there's a lot of money there, but until Treasury releases the guidelines, which they haven't done, we're guessing, we're guessing, and it's a very political process, as anyone knows. And, you know, so I don't know that we should be banking on that to mirror what CARES Act did. And you've heard all the discussion on the IT side earlier about all the confusion that Carla deals with on a daily basis about what's in, what's out. And I don't think we're gonna get any better clarity. So, you know, that, those are my thoughts at the moment. But again, this is, is pretty new, and I think Advisory has spent a lot of time thinking about this to bring something palatable forward that, you know, wouldn't break the bank, but start to help Board of Health get, you know, a step in the right direction.
Kathy, I'm sorry I didn't mention this before. Jason, are you done? I'm sorry, I don't mean to cut you off.
Yeah, go ahead, Tim. Thank you.
So just an aspect I wanna, I just wanna briefly mention is that something, as we talk about the Board of Health and their mandate and the scope of their work, and, and that increasing, we are exposing ourselves to a pretty massive risk with HIPAA in terms of test results, patient information. The average violation is $50,000 per incident. So if you had a stack of papers on your desk that had 10 test results, that's 10 violations, right? If you had an Excel file that had 100 results, you see where this is going. So we need to ask ourselves as a town, like, are we prepared for this, right? And we need to be very careful moving forward.
So Marty, one more thing, as you see the lack of consensus in Advisory on this. We have tried every way I know how to basically convince Board of Health that we have already compromised quite a bit as far as what we proposed. We agreed on the full-time director. We called Paul Sibelli and said, will you be flexible again with Barbara? He said, yes. We said, we're gonna help you find a solution to making sure we comply with HIPAA. We agree with you on that. We did not say anything about the increase in the inspectional services budget that they want. When Mary Lou first came to Advisory, she said, all they're asking for for fiscal '22 is for these three positions to be full-time. Everything else is flat. Well, that wasn't, it's not true. It's not even close to being true. Every single thing in their budget was way up. So we felt like we had gone more than halfway as far as doing this, and yet, and yet still trying not to, you know, really bust a budget with what they were asking for. But we got nowhere with that discussion. There was never any acknowledgement from any of the board. I mean, you guys saw some of the emails, and you, you've met with them too, that they weren't willing to compromise at all as far as what they wanted. They believed that they should have done this years ago, that this has nothing to do with COVID, and that they are so far behind with the things they need to be doing that this is their only solution. So Brian, to your point, I don't know how we get to a compromise if we don't do what I've outlined tonight. So I don't know what other compromise you can get to this point. I think these two groups can come together. I don't think we, we would have much trouble in coming up with something we think is palatable for one year. But I just don't see them moving at all off their original position, that they are determined to, to go to the town meeting with.
We've had some similar conversations. So, you know, if we can't get three out of three agreeing, two out of three agreeing would be helpful. Maybe that acts as a bit of a lever with the Board of Health. But let's hope everybody can be reasonable going forward. And again, I just think that, 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 you know, spilling blood on the town meeting floor about this just doesn't serve anybody. It just strikes me, there's gotta be a way to reach a, a compromise among reasonable people. We're all trying to accomplish the same thing.
Can I add just one thing to that?
Yeah.
So I, I, I think there's opportunities here. I know Chelsea had mentioned a fall town meeting at our last meeting, and I think that presents a lot of different opportunities. I know from the MMA meeting I was on today, that, you know, there is talk of some bill coming out, being able to fund, you know, potentially help some of the Board of Health, because we're not the only town that's having this issue with this time. So I, I, I think there's additional opportunities here, and I think there's other things that could fit within a fall town meeting as well. So I, I just think it's, it's something that we, we should consider. And I don't know, Chelsea, if you wanna jump in anymore on this, on that topic. I know it was your suggestion.
Yeah, I mean, I think it just, I think it just gives the Board of Health more options and time to see how the funding pans out and really, you know, get, get the shared services grant rolled out and get some of the, the staff in place that they're in the process of hiring right now. So, I, I just think it buys them more time to, you know, get their long-term plan together. I also would want them to factor in the three-year shared services grant, and then how they're going to fund those positions in another three years. So, you know, making sure that we have that all lined up, so we have a sustainable plan.
So Lisa, we agree that the fall town meeting would be a time to possibly readdress this. That's why we thought, that's why I thought the proposal we talked about the first would allow that flexibility. If what Chelsea and you were saying is, then, you know, let, go to, support what they're asking for right now, and then at a fall town meeting, possibly readdress that. I, I don't like, I don't know the mechanism for changing the budget at the fall town meeting. I've never been part of this. I'm not sure how that works. But as far as the shared services grant, we, I talked about that a lot with her too. And she said, well, Southboro is really reliant on septics. This grant, the way the four towns have talked about it, and I'm not sure why we didn't weigh in here more, the inspectional services is going to be more for food, which we don't need a lot of. So she doesn't think that helps us a whole lot. So that's why I don't know it's gonna go forth, 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 forth. And then she said, I hope everybody caught what someone said a minute ago, that, well, there's gonna be nursing in that, but if we get the full-time nurse, we won't need that. Well, I would want it to be the other way around. If it's, if we can get some nursing with the shared services, why we, when, we wanna reduce what the town has in its budget. So we're a long way from being able to, you know, have a meeting in the minds unless, I mean, the only other thing I can think of is what I proposed at first. So I'm not sure what a fall town meeting does for their budget if we're saying that, okay, let's just support what they're going to, what they're offering right now, let's just support it at town meeting. So we go in three and three, and I'll support it. And then what are we proposing? That at the fall town meeting, it gets reduced?
No, the fall town meeting would allow you to not have to budget FY '22, take advantage of the CARES until?
They're not agreeing to that, Chelsea. So it sounds good for us, but they're not agreeing to that.
No, but I think Kathy, I think, I, I think that, that, and again, this is where I come back to the point of, of everybody being reasonable here. Now, maybe the Board of Health will feel differently, but if the position of Advisory in the Board of Selectment, it's what Chelsea and Lisa are talking about, if, if the position is that this is what we are willing to do, we are willing to, to, to get, to establish a bridge without making these, these positions permanent that get you to a fall town meeting with the option that you then at fall town meeting will know more about whether or not we get CARES funding, whether or not what's going on with the other bills. If the Board of Health says, no, we just, we want what we want, and we want it now, I don't think they win at town meeting. If they do, then they win at town meeting. But I, I think that's such an unreasonable position, that if we're basically saying, we're gonna have a fall town meeting, we wanna find out if there's a way to reduce the burden on the taxpayers of Southboro, and this is the way forward, it gives you what you want from a, a staffing standpoint, but it maintains flexibility for the town from a fiscal standpoint, that if, again, we, you, you can only ask that people be reasonable. That strikes me as a perfectly reasonable approach that I hope the Board of Health sees as reasonable. I, I don't wanna, did I, did I misstate anything, Lisa, in terms of, and Chelsea, in terms of what you're thinking? Yeah, that, that's, we've had conversations with the Board of Health as well, and we've tried to drive home the point that, that we, we hear them, but we also have fiscal restraint to consider here, as well as, you know, potential pools of money that are floating around from both the state and the federal government that might allow our tax burden to be lessened. If they don't hear that, then I think they're gonna lose at the annual town meeting and put themselves in a worse position than they would be if they compromised. But that's their call.
So we're not really seeing as much differently as you might think we are. If, if Lisa and Chelsea are saying that what we'd like them to do is not increase their budget for fiscal year '22, but instead wait for the fall town meeting, in the interim, use CARES Act funding to basically offset the increased costs for the two new positions that they have either signed contracts for or about to sign contracts for. We're really not seeing as much different as you might think we are. It, what I proposed at first was trying to add flexibility, so we would be able to do exactly that. So if that's what you're saying, Chelsea, that you want to propose to them that we address this again at fall town meeting, but we would like them to not put the full-time positions in their budget July 1st, so that we use CARES Act funding between July 1st and the town meeting, the special town meeting, then it's kind of the same thing.
I don't think Advisory and the Board of Selectment finding common ground on this is gonna be the issue.
I agree with you. I, I know that, that at least, so these two here, we'll, we'll get to what we think is reasonable. It's making sure that Board of Health agrees with it. So this is another way to, I think, accomplish the same thing, which is to try to leverage CARES Act funding and add some flexibility and so that this can continue to be discussed, so we end up with the right permanent answer.
Yeah, Mark, and then Brian. Yeah, so I'm just a little bit concerned. I know that, you know, if you go back and look at previous budget messages that Brian and I have put in the, in the budget book in terms of sustainability and, and, you know, trying to grow, you know, with that in mind. You know, we're really not talking about the merits of adding the positions in. We seem to be talking about them and doing it based on the availability of grant funding. And, and I'm wondering if, if the positions would be different, or if people would have different viewpoints, if CARES Act and recovery money and everything else might not be on the table. Because at some point, these are gonna become positions that, you know, we're gonna have to own. And while I do agree with the bridge approach of trying to figure out where we wanna be and how we wanna get there, Board of Health is putting contracts in place with employees that are gonna make, you know, some of those bridge approaches, you know, somewhat difficult with contracts for, for permanent employees and hours in place already.
So Mark, you know, the original ask of the Board of Health was to, okay, we support the full-time director and give the full-time director a chance to really figure out what the town needs on a permanent basis. So we tried really hard just to get the one position in, and then give that person a chance to really come back when the COVID fog clears and say, this is what we really need to go forward with. So we tried that too, and it didn't fly. They didn't, they didn't, they didn't think that was the right thing to do, so.
Oh, I'm not saying it's from a lack of effort, Kathy, at all. I, I, I'm just, like I said, you know, I'm, I'm just, you know, concerned that we may be adding things in because we can. You know, similar to the approach that I think Marty mentioned earlier, that we've taken with police, and, you know, we'll bring people in in September and January, and it'll be great for this year, but we're gonna feel the other half of the burden the next year. And, you know, I think we, I'm hoping we're not setting ourselves up for something, you know, a couple of years down the road, which is, is gonna make, you know, '23 or '24, '25 the difficult year that we thought, you know, this year could be. Brian, with Brian Shea, it looked like?
Yeah, I was, just one point. And, you know, and I understand the point about, you know, the special town meeting, and I think that's actually the better way to go with this. And I think it's, but again, there's no guarantee of how that special town meeting is gonna vote in the fall. Nobody knows how it's gonna vote. And one point to Kathy, you know, you're, and to the Advisory Committee, you're the Advisory Committee. I'll defer to you on this, but I'll just tag on to Jason's point as well, that, you know, does a vote in April of FY '21 on the proposed FY '22 reserve fund, is that, you know, is, is that even a, a legal vote at this point on a reserve fund budget that doesn't even exist yet? So there's?
It's new ground, Brian, so I, you know.
And is a, and again, you, you answer. It's, it's your committee, you can answer it. But is it planned to use of reserve fund, the proper use of the reserve fund? So.
Marty, can I ask Carla a question?
Marty, can I ask Carla a question? Carla, could, for CARES Act reimbursement, could we budget flat from current fiscal year for the first half of the year? And then kind of approve the budget for a position on 1122 going forward? So the budget for that, those two positions would be in the Board of Health budget, but from a CARES Act perspective, it wasn't there for the reimbursable period?
When the special Town Meeting takes place, the budget is in place from, from that date, the date of the special Town Meeting.
I mean, for the annual one. So if, if, if the Board of Health's budget included the first six months at the old rate, and then the position was upgraded or hours were increased from part-time to full-time effective 1122.
No, no.
So you can't bifurcate a budget like that and say, the budget was $10,000 with first six months and $90,000 for the second six months for the total of 100?
How did we do that with the police last year where we staggered the start positions? So it'd be this, the role would be starting on 1122.
Looking for CARES. Yeah.
You would think that you could do that, um, that you could say, you know, for the first six months, this was a budget, second six months was a budget, as long as you made it clear. But Carla, you're the, you're the expert. I'm not a municipal accountant.
Yeah, and I'll just, I'll just throw in on the reserve fund. I think, I think that whether from a policy standpoint you want to do it is one question. But I think from a legal standpoint, that if there, if you, if you, i- i- if you take a good faith position based on the guidance you've gotten from whether it's the state or the feds, that this is an expense that is not going to fall on the town. It's going to be covered by CARES funding or FEMA funding or whatever. And there's a good faith basis for that, and it turns out that that good faith basis turns out to be incorrect, I think that's an unforeseen expense. I think that you, that, that you can legitimately rely on a reserve fund transfer to then fund that. That, you know, I suppose you could argue the other side of it, but I think that's a pretty reasonable position to take.
Marty? Yes, follow up on, on Kathy's proposal. I mean, it seems to me from the Board of Health's perspective that if we were to have a Fall Town Meeting, if we're doing, if we were to do what Kathy's suggesting here, others have suggested to, uh, we consider in the fall, that at that point, the Board of Health would still have the option, if they disagreed with what advisory and or selectmen were saying, to go to Town Meeting with a different proposal. So it doesn't seem to me they're giving up that opportunity. They're simply delaying that opportunity. So I would hope that that would be something that they could.
That's what I was trying to make, Sam. Yeah.
Sam, I think what they would say, and I don't want to speak for the Board of Health, but they've said it to us, is the problem is they have trouble recruiting people for roles that have that much uncertainty.
Right. But there is still uncertainty relative to CARES Act and other funding sources out there too. So there's some degree of uncertainty, I think. And as well as advisory's assurance that, uh, there's a backstop there. Again, that's something that, you know, maybe advisory membership changes or whatever. So they're taking some risk with that, but I think that's a calculated decision they got to make.
Okay, I think we may have exhausted Board of Health as well.
Us at least, us at least. It's not the Board of Health.
What, what did you say, Kathy? These are the two short discussions?
Yep.
I did.
The two short ones.
Um, actually, I, I think that these are the two that are, I, I think, are there other areas of, at least, first of all, looking at it from the, from the, 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 the non-capital budget, are there, I, I don't think there are any other areas of disagreement, or certainly it's not significant disagreement between, we haven't take form, taken formal votes, but, but, um, you know, we had the large departments and we didn't even have the small departments. And there's, there's, there's not a whole lot of, 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 uh, places in the, in the budget from FY21 to FY22 where there, there's anything approaching controversy. Are you all in the same place?
Yes, but can I just say a couple of things as far as overall, looking at this? Um, the, if you look, if you take a look at Brian's Excel spreadsheet, um, miraculously, the actual increase, proposed increase in expenses is 3%. The year-over-year tax increase is more because the other revenue the town expects isn't going up as much as the expenses are. So the tax levy is going to have to bear more of it than its fair share or its share. Um, so that's good news. But the reason that is the case is again because of schools. The schools have come in again at a really low number. And so the town side has still gone up more than it should. It's gone up, um, the high fives. Um, there's five departments that have gone up, um, a lot more than 3%, police being the most. Um, so here's our lesson to learn again. It's part because of when we start people middle of the year, then the next year we got to pick them all up. Um, Mark and Brian preaches to me all the time. So they've got contractual increases, they've got that. So that one was bad. DPW is pretty big. Um, Youth and Family Services is a little bit big, but there's again, same thing, the part, the, um, admin started part year. So now we've got the full year in there. So I don't think there's anything else we can do with any of the other budgets that I know of. Um, so we're there. We voted on almost all of them to, to approve them. These were our two, um, sticking points is MIS and Board of Health. Um, so we've done most voting. So we're waiting for you guys to take your positions to see if there's anything else that you don't support um, as far as that goes. Um, so I think we're, we're probably going to be in pretty good shape as far as everything else goes. Um, then when we get to the warrant articles, um, there's not much, um, I know there's much controversy there. We're going to talk in a minute about the Mills tax. I'm going to talk about the advisory bylaw change, um, but those are fairly straightforward. Uh, we are not going to take a position on the South Union sale until Town Meeting for obvious reasons. Uh, we don't know what we're voting on. Um, and then we are probably not going to take a position if it ends up going to Town Meeting, the Downtown Initiative. Again, for obvious reasons, it's, you know, there's still a lot to be discussed. Other than that, I think we're there. Um, as far as voting, we've voted to, to basically support all them except for the noise bylaw, and that was a 07 vote to not support, just like last year, because that hasn't changed. We haven't officially voted on the five CPC actual project articles, but we took straw votes last week. Um, we, it looks like we will not support the St. Mark's Church proposal. That would be unanimous for the four that can't actually vote. There's three that can't vote because of conflicts. Um, we did vote to support the, everything else except for the fence. Um, that is on the, the trail with the WMW, RA land. Um, but they weren't unanimous votes, but they were close. So I think we probably will end up supporting four of the five CPC projects. We won't support St. Mark's, I don't think, when we actually vote. So we're, we're just, um, we're there. So we're just waiting to see what you guys, um, are going to vote on. So we know whether there's any further, um, thing to discuss as far as make, trying to make sure that we go to Town Meeting, um, and, and lockstep.
Um, the one question I'll ask and then see if there's, um, any questions on what you said from folks on our board. It was the St. Mark's vote based on the, the, the concerns that were raised last time around about it, the, uh, the whole church-state thing, or was there something else that, or was it-
Yeah, so we only have one member on advisory, so we, we switch one, Melanowski, for another. And so Jason took a look at what we said last year. So the vote was, um, for the exact same reason that there's concern that, um, there's going to be litigation caused by this. Now, I will say this, um, and everybody should look at, the church has done a good job as far as going around and looking at projects that were funded by CPC, that there had been no litigation. Um, but that was the reason, Marty.
Kathy, can I clarify? Because that's not why I voted no.
Go ahead, Jason.
Yeah, so I, I voted no because I just didn't think it was a proper use of taxpayer funds that everyone funds um, for the, for use by, um, one population versus when we look at all the other projects that are before us this year and many before, um, typically, you know, are benefited by multiple members. You know, basically the entire community for the most part. I know, like, some could argue that Burnett House didn't benefit every single member of the community. But, you know, when I looked at big picture, the number of projects we had in front of us this year, some of the caution that Mr. Mills articulated when he was in front of both committees, the Board and, and Advisory, um, that it just wasn't the best use of taxpayer money, uh, given the benefit, you know, to the broader good was the main rationale for my no vote.
Okay.
Okay. Um, that was my, that was my question. I'll tell you, I've, I've got a slightly different view on the, uh, uh, from a litigation standpoint, I'm not particularly concerned. I think that it's, I, I won't say it's frivolous, but I think it's pretty close to frivolous. The notion that that's, that's a, uh, First Amendment issue with the church-state. I, I just think it, it, it's, it's pretty close to frivolous in my view. Um, but, um, I, I hear what you're saying, Jason. Um, but, but I guess, ooh, where did I, I guess I start with you, Mr. Shea, doing my elliptical approach.
On that specific article?
No, 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 on any of the, uh, on anything that, that, that Kathy touched upon. I mean, we, we took, we didn't take straw votes. We, we just, um, at our last couple of meetings, we have, um, discussed whether or not, um, any of the members of the Board have issues with particular um, of the items and, and, um, for instance, I, I might want to talk a little bit about the, um, the lighting article. And, and Mark, I don't know if you had a chance to touch base with the Building Department. One of the things that concerns me about the Building Department is that we're creating this enforcement mechanism that I don't, I'm not sure that we can afford. Um, and supposedly there are some regulations coming that are going to explain how enforcement works and the like, and we've not seen those. I have a pretty tough time to say, you know, either voting yes or no on something without knowing what the, what the details are. Um, but so it's more across the board, um, Brian, on, on the, the various articles that Kathy touched base about?
No, I, uh, I'd say generally, uh, are in, in agreement with what Kathy said. I, again, I just think the two budgets that we spent the majority of the time tonight so far discussing are the, the two biggest things to tackle.
Okay, uh, Sam?
Yeah, I'm, I'm pretty well-aligned as well. Obviously, all of us have heard a lot of discussion about a lot of these things, so not many surprises left in this. The only one I would flag is the, uh, site plan review bylaw. I remain very interested in having the constructive approval language remain in there. Uh, the rest of it, I think, is very helpful, a good step forward, but that one, to me, is an important thing to retain as opposed to remove. So that's my one question, Mark, I guess.
We're interested in how you guys do vote on those three too. Um, so we have not voted on the three other zoning articles either. We think we will vote on those before Town Meeting, so we are definitely interested with what you guys think on those three.
Do you know the item that Sam is talking about, Kathy? We discussed it a little bit length with Ms. Luttrell at our last meeting. But anyway, we get to, basically, there's a provision in the, um, the proposed change. And Sam, correct me if I'm wrong, and maybe I should have you do it, but, but basically it eliminates a provision that says if the, if the planning board now sitting instead of the site, the, the old site committee, but if the planning board doesn't act within a certain amount of time, that, that, that's constructive approval. And that's taken out without any, um, provision for what happens if basically the planning board just sits on something. And the explanation we heard last time was, well, the planning board and the, the applicant always reach an agreement. But that doesn't address the situation where the applicant says, I want a decision. Um, there's no mechanism for forcing the planning board to act. And, and, and the language of the, the, the article would seem to allow for just to sit there, really, in perpetuity, without any mechanism for someone getting their application act in on if the planning board chooses not to, and the applicant won't just keep continuing to an extension. I get that all right, Sam?
Uh, yeah, close. The, the, for me, one key point is the current proposal says that the planning board shall act within 60 days, period. And so that, to me, doesn't give somebody a right to appeal. If there's no decision, how do you appeal no decision if you're not happy with it?
Right. So that, that was the only, that was a sticking point on that bylaw. We haven't gotten, we haven't gotten a resolution on that. I, I, I'm not going to support it with that language in. I, given a bit, Mr., with that language taken out or something not replacing it, I suspect that's where Mr. Stivers is. We haven't taken a, an actual vote.
Yeah, planning board was arguing that they need sufficient time for site plan, which I agree with. Uh, I'm, I would be fine with extending that to 90 or 100 days or whatever to allow them to do that. For practical standpoint, you can find ways to, uh, if you're forced to approve with conditions that the applicant may not be happy with. So the applicant is, is motivated to ask for an extension as you work out the details. And so that's, in my experience on the zoning board, never a problem in terms of finding a way to extend the period you need to do an adequate job of review. So anyway, it's still open, but, uh, I think there's a fairly straightforward solution for me anyway. I might have to keep it in and extend the time period a little bit.
And, and Brian, and, uh, Mark, I asked you, um, or at least mentioned to you the possibility of touching base with the Building Department? Um, because again, the, the lighting bylaw would visit upon them, at, at least my read of it, um, pretty significant additional responsibilities. Have you had a chance to do that, or is that something for, further down the line?
Uh, that's something that is in play, but I don't have an answer for you right now, but hopefully we'll have one shortly.
Okay, fair enough.
Marty?
Yeah, hold on, Sam. Does anybody, first of all, anybody else on our board want to weigh in on, on the whole conversation Sam and I just had about site plan review? Um, a little Arcania. And, uh, also whether or not anybody wants to weigh in on the lighting bylaw, um, question that is the back and forth that I had last week with Ms. Huland. Appears to be no. Okay, go ahead, Sam. Oh, Brian, go ahead.
No, I just, I'm all for the lighting thing, as long as the light that I have by my driveway at my garage in front of my house don't violate the bylaw.
You know, it's one of the, here is, this is, you know, metrics, data are important, and it is, it is unclear to me. A, a number of things are unclear to me about the lighting bylaw. Maybe they can get answered before Town Meeting. Number one, the number, I'm sorry, Sam.
We need more light, Marty.
No, that's right. No, but the number of, 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 um, households are going to be affected by it. I don't think there's any indication of what that is. I mean, is, are 90% of the houses in Southboro going to have to go out and change their lights or reposition them? I don't think there's any data on that. That's number one. Number two, what the positive impact is going to be. In other words, we're, we're surrounded by towns with a lot more light than us. Um, and, and, and if we go through all of this, which is going to have a cost to, to, to taxpayers in replacing this, again, it seems like a pretty significant percentage of households are going to be affected. If the positive impact is going to be nil, I mean, it makes us feel better, but it doesn't really have much of a positive impact. Um, and number three is, is it, I worry, and it's, it's, it's an issue I had with the noise bylaw, that, that, you know, a community doesn't have to resolve things by litigating everything and by filing complaints about everything. And how much of a problem is, is this lighting issue that we're creating some enormous enforcement infrastructure that, um, maybe our building department can't handle and maybe is completely unnecessary, um, uh, as a way of resolving issues?
Yeah. You know, I mean, the reality is, there's a lot of streets in our town that do not have streetlights on them. So, and the reality is as well that we go through periods where there's rashes of break-ins in automobiles and, and other things at night. So having some sort of a light, you know, it gives residents some sort of sense of comfort and hopefully, again, 90% of the people in town don't need to change their, uh, driveway lights to, to comply with this. So.
So Brian, that question got asked last year at a forum I went to. Marty Hulahan was leading it, and she had the WPI professor with her that helped them craft this. And that question got answered, and she said that, that current lights are grandfathered. Um, so it only goes, well, that's what she said though, Marty. I'm telling you, that, that question was asked, and that it's only when you replace lights do you have to conform.
No, you got to, that's, well, that, that may have been somewhat, that's not what the, that's not what the language of the bylaw says now.
To me, that's a really important question to get answered, right? And then the second thing that, um, got asked, Kristen LeVoe was there from RIC. And I said, Kristen, you really should better ask about them, how this infects your lighting projects that you have on the table that still aren't done yet, because those are bright lights. Um, and I don't think that question ever got fully answered.
It has not. So.
Hopefully be in before.
That, 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 that needed to be addressed. Um, as well as the enforcement piece, which is, again, I just, I, yeah, lighting and noise, it, it, the, I, I know the police chief has pretty strong views about the idea that, that the, the, you know, that our law enforcement personnel should be somehow, um, you know, obliged to become noise police. Um, and that's, that's a big part of why certainly I voted against it last time. We haven't taken, I don't think we've taken a formal position this time. Um, but again, I just think there, there are different ways to resolve issues about whether it's noise or lighting than to have a, a, you know, an, you know, significant enforcement mechanism in town. So that worries me.
Marty? Marty?
Yes, Sam, I'm sorry.
I had two additional questions. Uh, one, on the noise bylaw, I heard Mr. Lapine at the advisory meeting say that he has a updated version of that bylaw that I thought he said he had circulated. Um, I would be interested in seeing that, and maybe it's worth following up with him to see if he would.
Is he allowed to do that?
Send it around.
No, Brian, he was told that what he's got to do is amend it on the town floor. That it's coming across like it was last year. So he now understands that. And so he, he was advised as to the procedure, if he wants to, um, propose an amendment, what he's going to have to do. So he can't change what's going in the warrant. Right, Mark? Um, but he has been told how he could change it at the Town Meeting.
Yeah, I, I understand that, but I've, I remain interested in seeing what he plans to do at Town Meeting before Town Meeting.
So he told us at the meeting he'd sent it. He hasn't. So he told us at the meeting he'd send it, he hasn't, and then he said he was going to send it at the meeting, and he still hasn't. So we haven't seen what he's proposing to change.
I've not seen it. Mark, have you gotten anything like that?
No, I, I did have a brief conversation with the town clerk who told me that, he told the clerk the same thing, that he was going to submit something and that Jim said he'd share it once he got it, but I've seen nothing.
Okay.
It's crazy. He took the decibel counter out of there, so that that's not in it anymore. So that's what he did tell us last week, but that was about it.
Okay. My other question, Marty, relates to the SAP.
Before we go there, Sam, I just want to make sure that, 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 I guess from either board, that there's not additional comment or questions about either of those two bylaws. We spent a little bit of time talking about them. No? Okay. All right, go ahead, Sam.
Other, is a follow up on SAP. I recall hearing conversation at the personnel board relative to the issue about the, the pay for overtime pay or whatever that Jason and others have pursued here. And the, the comment was made that they had asked for an opinion from Labor Council, I think it was, back in November, and they hadn't heard anything from him. So if they're waiting for something there, I think it would be worth following up on just to make sure that there's nothing outstanding that would get in the way of, of language that they want to have for town meeting.
Do you know, Mark, do you know the answer to that?
I don't know that they're waiting on something for town meeting, Sam. I know that there was a question that they're waiting on from Labor Council in terms of, I guess, the easiest way to put it is reduction in benefits, if they were, if they were to take a look at that. And whether, you know, there was some juris, you know, or some pecking order in terms of, you know, vacation versus sick time versus other things and that, but yeah, I, I think that's the only issue. I'm not aware of any, of another issue.
Well, whatever it is, I mean, it seems to me waiting since November is not a great result there in terms of getting an opinion on that. So it'd be good if they could get what they need.
But Mark's right, they're not waiting for town. They, they're through with their work as far as Article Five. It's pretty cut and dry this year. There's not a lot in it. So they are aware that they're waiting for this, and they don't, they said, they told us at, at last week's meeting that they asked for, I think in January, maybe December.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
Okay, advisory folks, we, we may be on the verge of letting you go.
Can we talk, Marty, about the meals tax and the advisory by law changes? John Butler's here for that one. So these are quick, I think.
Okay, meals tax and the advisory. Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead, Lisa.
Sorry. So Marty, I don't know what, at what point I, I want to discuss the downtown initiative tonight. I don't know if that's something you want to do while advisory is here, or if you want to wait and do it when we talk about the warrant articles. I will leave that to you. I mean, because my request is of the board, but it might be.
Are we going to need advisory to weigh in?
No.
Okay.
I think it's the, the board's decision. We can wait.
Yeah, why don't we take care of the meals tax and the, the, the by law proposed change? And then, you know, advisory folks, we'll let them stick around, but, but we'll get on to our other.
We're going to our own meeting, so we will not stick around.
Okay, fair enough. Okay, so anything else before we move to, which one do you want to take first, Kathy, meals tax or?
At a consideration for Mr. Butler, let's start with advisory bylaws, because he probably doesn't care about the meals tax. So if he needs to weigh in, he's here. But this one's pretty simple. So the advisory by law is being proposed to change for four things. So I'll start with easy and go to hard. First thing is to add officially the position of a vice chair. We've had a vice chair for many years, but there's nothing in the by law saying we should have a vice chair. It just says, chair and secretary. So we'd like to officially put the vice chair in there. Second, we are proposing to change the number of advisory committee members from nine to seven. Third, we are proposing to add language that would allow an advisory member to sit on a committee who's charged with the capital planning for the town. And as you know, there is another warrant article that is going to, is proposing to make that committee permanent. The current advisory by law says we can only sit on ad hoc committees. So it would allow the advisory liaison that's intended for that committee to be able to actually do that. So that was needed to go along with that. That warrant article. Then the last thing is, and this one's a little complicated, currently, the advisory by law says that for any advisory member that sits on another committee, when that committee's subject matter comes in front of advisory, that advisory member not only has to recuse himself from discussing it, they don't count as a quorum. And so advisory had a problem this year. We had three people on capital planning committee. We only had seven members. And so if those three members couldn't count as far as a quorum, we couldn't have a meeting to discuss capital planning. So as everybody knows, I resigned, so that would solve that problem, so we'd have five. So we solved it for this year by me resigning from capital planning. But going forward, we would like to change the language so that the, all the members who are at the meeting count for the quorum. They still have
Food and water, dry food and water, all these looking.
So I'm not sure what that was, but whatever. So we want to change the language that says that we don't count as a quorum to not say they strike that, so that we only have to recuse ourselves from discussion, but can still count as far as a meeting quorum. So that's the four changes we're proposing for the advisory by law. And we did go back and talk to some of the older folks on advisory, Al Hamilton, Mr. Butler, and Jim Haggerty, to understand why the language is written the way it is today. And they were very nice to remind us that, remember, advisory is a legislative committee, supposed to be independent, and we don't want advisory members to basically sit on other committees and start advocating for the budgets of those committees. So there's a reason that we need to be careful about what advisory members are allowed to do as far as other committees go. And we think we respected this with the language we're proposing.
Okay, was, so you guys have voted on this, and this is, this is a, a full-fledged supported advisory article?
Yep, 7-0, and we're proposing to actually sponsor the article too.
Okay, before we, and, and before we bring, might as well start bringing John Butler over, but does anybody on the, my reaction is all of these seem pretty reasonable. A vice chair, all right, hopefully isn't too controversial. I'm assuming the number from nine to seven is because
It seems to be a more effective number. Nine's hard to get, and nine's hard to work with. So the only committee I've ever been on town that had nine was Public Safety Building Committee, which was well-run committee, as well as it can be run, but it was still, I thought, too many people. So we were pretty much in agreement that seven seems to be, we've had seven full-size for, you know, a year and a half, maybe two years now, and it just seems to be a more effective number as far as advisory goes.
Okay. So again, the, the, the proposals seem reasonable to me, but I'll go around, I'll start with you, Mr. Stivers.
I'm supportive of all of them.
Okay, Lisa?
Same here.
Chelsea?
I'm good. Thank you.
And Brian?
Support.
Okay, let's see if we all change our mind after we hear from Mr. Butler.
Well, I'm a little puzzled. Here's what happened. Kathy Cook asked me to look at some lang, or look at this problem back in, I'm going to say, November, or something like that. And I met with advisory a while ago now with some language which was drafted and which was amended at that meeting. But that language, at the time that I last discussed this with advisory, included language that said "may not vote or be counted for purposes of a quorum." Now, what, what you just said tonight suggested that, two things, that you had switched to a language, proposing language that uses the word "recuse" when matters are considered. The problem with that, so, so perhaps I just need a clarification first. At the time that I left the advisory meeting the last time, the lang, the word was not "recuse," but the word wording was "may not be, may not vote or be counted for purposes of a quorum." Have you adopted language that uses the word "recuse"?
Okay, so this was, so John, what you're saying is news to me. I'm looking at what I thought, it's on your slide, where
Yes, that's what I recommended, but, but you, your committee took a vote at that meeting in which I think that Mr. Melonowski proposed that we not use the word "recuse," that we use the word, that the wording that was in the, in the existing text. And the reason is that "recuse" encompasses the notion of not being counted for a quorum, as well as needing to leave the head table and not participate. And your committee voted to stick with the language, "may not vote or be counted for purposes of a quorum" at the meeting I was at. Now, if you took it, that's why I was asking if you took it up subsequently and re-adopted the word "recuse," which I had proposed. Because if you did that, it was after I, after, after my participation.
So I may have messed up here. We did not take it up after that meeting. We voted. And I, we voted on your recommended amendment, so that's what I
Yes, but you didn't adopt what I recommended. You amended that, which I was fine with, to stay with the language. Advisory may not vote or be counted for purposes of a quorum during advisory meetings. Now, I had suggested you use the word "recuse" because it's commonly understood and used throughout the rules about the towns, but you thought that that, your committee felt and voted that thought it was too restrictive and wanted to stay with this language, other language, just slightly less restrictive, and I, I, I didn't weigh in. I thought whatever you wanted to do on that was fine.
Okay, so advisory is going to have to help me here. I saved your amendment, and I didn't go back and look at the vote, and I thought this is what we agreed to. So I sent this to Mark, saying
I think, I think that, I think that if in principle, the Board of Selectmen is okay with this, then there's just something that needs to be clarified with advisory, but I, I, I know that I have the text that advisory voted, which I sent to you after the meeting, because it was amended during the meeting. And so I, I don't think that we need to take selectmen's time on this further at the moment, because I don't think that they care whether the language is "recused" or not, or may not be vote, may not vote or be counted for purposes of a quorum.
So if BOS agrees with that, then we will do as John suggests. We'll take it up at our next meeting and get this clarified as far as what we really want there as far as "recuse" or "quorum." Is that okay with?
I don't think that, I don't think that is going to change the day for us.
Right. I'm trying to get you, get you off the, try to get your meeting shortened.
And I thought this was easy. Okay, sorry. So, so John, thank you. I, I think we're done with that one. Okay, so meals tax. I, I think this one's a little bit more straightforward, maybe. So as everybody recalls, before the pandemic, we had both Board Selectmen and Advisory had voted to support the addition of a local meals tax, 0.75% of the cost of the meal. The concern back then, before the vote was taken, was that this was an undue burden on the various restaurants, businesses in Southborough. We went to a lot of effort to basically talk to them individually unanimously, except for one. They said this would not be a burden because it's a pass-through. It's the customer that's going to pay the tax. And of course, there's many customers that eat in Southborough that don't live in Southborough, so it's a way to basically share some of the tax burden with other towns, just like they share with us when we go to those towns. So that's where we left off, and then, of course, the pandemic hit, and it did not seem appropriate to bring this forward in the truncated version of the warrant that we did last June. So here we are again, a year later, pandemic's still here. So advisory voted to support the meals tax, again, unchanged, but we also voted to delay its implementation to January 1st of '22. So if we, if this passes at the May meeting, if you don't vote to delay it, it would be effective July 1st. That's the, so the Massachusetts tells you when it's going to be effective. They do allow a little bit of time for the various restaurant owners, et cetera, to get their software program to actually pick up the tax. So that's kind of the scoop on that one. I have heard through the grapevine that some of you, maybe all of you, are concerned about the start date. So I'll leave it to that and ask you guys to let us know what you think.
I'm not sure about the grapevine. I, I, I think Kathy and obviously folks on the board can weigh in. I think the, the question was, it was folks thinking out loud, saying, does it make sense to start it in January, or just to hold it, you know, adopt it, but hold it for the year? I, I mean, I think we're, you know, we're, we're I think we're all in agreement that, number one, it's, and, and based on the information that was accumulated last time, we considered it about the businesses. I don't want to say they didn't really care, but it came close to not caring. It's a pass-through for them. The, the concern is, I don't want to say concern. The, the, the thought is, we, and I think advisory agrees with this, want to do everything we possibly can to have as clear a possible sailing for businesses when they start getting back up on their feet. And so that's the only issue in, in terms of thinking out loud. Should we, should we go with January 1, or should we just adopt it, but say we're going to have a, a, a year before it kicks in? Did I misstate anything from our board about what our thinking was? Yeah, so that's, that's, did you all have that sort of a discussion, you know, what, and, and what's your reaction to the idea of adopting it, but just saying we're not going to, it's, it's not going to kick in until even later than the half year?
I think the most important thing is it gets adopted. We really feel really strongly, you know, it's additional revenue, it takes some pressure off the tax levy, it's an annuity year after year. It's about, you know, when restaurants get back to normal, hopefully, it's about $125,000 a year. So it's not a small amount of money, and it's a regular recurring item. So we're much more concerned about just getting it adopted. We, the reason we, we suggested that you push it back is because we were concerned about the same thing. So maybe language that does either what you said, which is just adopt it with a effective date TBD, however you can word that, or adopt it no earlier than January 1st with the flexibility to make it later, if that seems to be what we should do, depending on how the fall turns out. Either route, probably, I would think, and again, I'm speaking for one person, we haven't talked about this for a while. Probably would be palatable to advisory, I would guess, but they can weigh in.
And, and Mark, I'm not, maybe this isn't even a question for you, it's a question for town council. I, I mean, I wonder if we could, you know, if, if, if full throttle, things are back, I mean, if, if, you know, geez, knock on wood. Oh, boy, it'd be nice if all of a sudden, you know, the economy is open, you know, sometime this summer, at the end of the summer. And, and with very, very few or no real limitations, you know, businesses are, are up and running. I don't, I don't think there'd be an issue with, with a January 1, but let's say, for whatever reason, things lag again. You know, there have been enough curveballs in this whole thing. You know, the, the possibility of putting some metric into the vote, that if, that if, you know, by X date, you know, businesses aren't allowed to be up and, and running at full capacity, then, then the delay is for the entire fiscal year or something like that.
I mean, one suggestion, Marty, that you may want to consider, and again, I would, I would agree with your first point of deferring to council, but you know, possibly, you know, you put something in that, you know, that it would be implemented once the governor lifts the emergency declaration for the pandemic. Because that would, I think that would signal then, basically, the, the full reopening of, of the state without, without restrictions. So I, I think that would be when things would be, would be back in. So you could do something like that.
That's a pretty easy metric.
Yeah. Question, Marty?
Yes, Sam.
I, we didn't vote, did we, in terms of a January 1 start or not?
No, we did not.
Talked about it.
Yeah, we talked about it.
How about, I'm, I'm in, in the same camp as Kathy here in terms of primary interest in getting it approved and in place, given that it's one of the few opportunities we have for broadening the tax base some. And could we vote to adopt as of January 1 at this town meeting and then have a fallback with a special town meeting in the fall if, if things aren't improved to modify that, to change the start date?
I mean, I think we could. I actually like Mark's idea a lot, which is just tie it to the emergency declaration. What do you think about that, Kathy? I know you're not talking for your entire committee, but.
So why don't we let others talk? Andrew, Beth?
Yeah, so I would suggest we just add some flexibility to let the selectmen decide the date. So, you know, you know, 1/1/22, no later than 1/1/23 with the selectmen to decide the date, you know, with, you know, a 90-day or, or something, 120-day notice to local businesses.
I think, I think we'd be fine with that. I, I, I don't think, I think, I, I, again, people could shake their heads if they disagree. I think we are unanimous in support of the meals tax, the Board of Selectmen. Yes, we're unanimous in support of it. It's just the same concerns you have about not doing anything that, that It's just the same concerns you have about not doing anything that, that stops businesses from trying to get going as full throttle as they possibly can when, you know, the cloud finally lifts.
Yeah. And for me, one of the key points was, you know, tapping into the number of people that come from outside South Borough and, and utilize places. I think a large, in large part, that's dependent upon office parks filling up again. And like places like Vinbin catering lunches over at, uh, you know, office parks for, you know, lunch meetings, things like that. And I think one of the realities we're going to face, even if the emergency order is lifted, I think, still think it's going to be a long time before businesses ramp up and fully staff offices as well. If anything, there's more talk about doing a permanent, you know, rotation with people, keeping people working at home. So I think that market's going to be tough to tap into. And I think, I don't know that we're going to fully realize that, um, the revenue that was targeted pre-pandemic. So.
You may be right.
Do you, do you, do you think you all might be comfortable with a no sooner than January 1, 2022? The exact date to be determined by a vote of the board of selectmen?
That's fine with me.
Yep.
Works for me. I think you just need to be aware, you need to have a quarter notice essentially. I think it is.
Yep.
You, you got to give them good notice. So you can't be like deciding in November if you really want to start in January.
That's a good point, Jason. But I think that's, you know, that, that, that also is a nice signal to send to the, to the, uh, to the restaurants who are going to be affected, that, 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 you know, we, we're not sitting here chomping at the bit to, to, to throw this tax at you. We really are trying to take into consideration the, the, um, you know, what, what your businesses have been through.
Some might want to do it sooner because they are slower and they have the bandwidth to redo their systems.
Yeah. So Kathy, does that make, do you all want to take a vote on it? Do you want to get back to us? What do you want to do?
Is advisors are ready to vote on this right now? It sounds like we are. Okay. So Andrew P, you want to make the motion?
Um, I don't know if I caught exactly what the last verbage was.
It's been a while since I've been on the advisory committee, but I don't think, I don't think I could be grandfathered in to make a motion.
I think I caught it. Do you want to go?
I remain concerned about the optics of it, uh, as I expressed at the advisory meeting. Even if we're going to delay its start date, people at OP Talk will think it's coming out of their pocket. And based upon what Lisa said earlier about, you know, overall concern about increased taxes. If we're not going to implement it until a future date, then my recommendation would be, we put it on a warrant in the future date as opposed to delaying its, uh, implementation.
So John, I talked to personally at least 15, um, businesses that are affected. So, you know, it's not just Tomatoes, it's Starbucks and it's, um, anybody that serves food. And every single one of them said they were fine with this. They understood it was a pass through. There was one person that came to the board of selectmen, um, that didn't like it, but it was, I think for a different reason. So I'm not sure who you've talked to. The individuals, um, that you've talked to, if these are customers, yeah, they are going to pay it. If you go to the restaurants here, you are paying it. That's where it's going to fall. So that part's true. But the businesses literally just collect it and remit it, just like they do the, the, the 6.25% they collect now and remit it. So they're just going to collect 7% instead of six and a quarter.
Well, if we're going to delay the implementation, why not delay the vote?
I think it's worth signaling that it's coming to people.
Well, I think we have no guarantee we're going to have a fall meet town meeting too. Time we were going to do one last year and we did. So I think let's vote on it when it's a part of us.
I'm ready to vote, Kathy.
Okay. So Jason, you want to make the motion?
I'll move that advisory support, um, adding a meals tax to the, uh, 2021 annual town meeting warrant article with the condition that the board of selectmen have the ultimate authority of setting the start date with a start date to be no earlier than January 1, 2022.
Second?
I second.
Okay, Judy and Andrew, um, any further discussion?
Only question, it, Kathy, only question is whether or not we want to have a, a end date on that. But no later than, I don't know. 2023, 2024, I don't.
Board of selectmen to do this. They're, they're going, they, they will, um, I mean, they want to, they want to help the finances of South Borough as much as we do. So I'd say, um.
We're going to leave it as is then.
So roll call vote Judy.
Bud's eye.
Cook eye. AD?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
Tim?
Sorry, I was muted. Aye.
AP?
Aye.
Mr. Rooney?
No.
Okay. So Claire, 601, excuse me, 610. Okay.
All right. So, um, I think you all can go to your own meeting.
Thank you. So this was, um, very productive. So thank you guys for, um.
Motion to adjourn?
Judy?
Yeah, I move we adjourn.
Okay. My favor, I'm Judy.
Give me a second.
Seconded. Andrew made the motion. Judy seconded. Judy? Cook eye. AD?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Um, AP?
Aye.
And Mr. Rooney?
Aye.
He's 70. Thank you guys. We will be in touch.
All right. Have good evenings. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. Advisory, you got to go to your second meeting now.
So much for journey. All right. Interesting discussions. So, a couple of options on the town meeting warrant articles and, and Mark slapped my wrist if, um, I mean, there's a couple of possibilities. One is to, to march through a number of them tonight. The other possibility, what I, I was thinking about, you know, how to, how to, very few of them are controversial, is to, between now and next week, um, just all, e- each of us, if there are issues that we want to hold on a vote, just send those, the, the numbers of those warrant articles to Mr. Purple. And that way, when we meet next Tuesday, we'll know which ones we can just vote to support collectively and which ones we can spend time on. Does that make sense? Mark, what do you think about that? Does that work for you?
Um, you want me to be honest, right?
Yeah.
Well, I, we, we've created a lot more uncertainty tonight in a lot of areas of a warrant that we should be wrapping up. And I think we've, we've pulled a couple of threads. I, I, I don't disagree with you that there's a lot of articles on here that I think are pretty straightforward, a lot of them that are annual. And, um, so like I said, I mean, if you want to wait until next week to take positions on everything, I, that's fine. Um, but, you know, we really, we really have to get this wrapped up next Tuesday. So I guess it's, it's going to be the pack a lunch meeting. We'll have to determine that, um, when we look at the agenda.
Yeah, Brian, I don't think it's going to be, I, I mean, I think, I think there's so little disagreement about the articles, but I'm sorry, go ahead, Brian.
So just, just, you know, I will 99% certain not be able to attend next week. So I certainly am, uh, have the least say of the five, uh, at this point, given timing of when town meeting is going to be. So feel free to proceed in the direction that you're moving, but I will not be here next Tuesday in all likelihood.
Okay. What do other folks think?
I think your suggestion's a good one, Marty. I think that, uh, uh, we could actually, uh, set markup to put together a sort of omnibus vote on 80, 90% of these to say, let's take the position all up at one point.
Yeah, I really think it's going to streamline things, Mark. I don't think, I, I agree with you that there are some, some threads that were pulled tonight, but, but honestly, for the most part, they weren't pulled by us. Um, you know, it's, it's, uh, it's a little bit outside of our control. And I, and again, when I come back to, I, I really think that it's so important, both in the IT area and in the border health area, that, that, that we not have a battle on town meeting floor about those two things. And I just think it's so important to reach consensus.
I agree. I, so that's, so that's fine. So then I guess your, your thought, Marty, is to basically, you know, have each of the members send back articles that they want to discuss in terms of where they're at and, and if there's any, any discussion to be had. And then the rest of them will be taken in one vote.
Exactly. And I'll be surprised if there's more than four or five articles that fall into that category.
Okay. I see Chelsea counting.
Maybe we should have a limit for each of us in terms of what we're allowed to have.
Tim is suggesting a limit.
So folks are comfortable with that approach? Okay. All right. So that takes us to, um, reports, chairman's report. The, the, the scheduling of upcoming agenda items, if there's, there's, it sort of falls into, I guess, loosely two categories. Number one is the, um, our goals sheet, um, which I've tried to, you know, religiously send out. Uh, I actually think we've done a pretty good job, um, this year addressing it. The, and so one of the things I wanted to bring up is whether or not there are some items on that goal sheet, whether it's March 4th or, uh, excuse me, um, April 20th or May 4th, um, that folks want to put on just to, because we've let that, you know, a couple of them slip in address. I don't have to decide that tonight, but just maybe fall into the same category. If there are things on the goals list that, that, um, you know, I've let slide by not putting them on the agenda or, you know, we've let slide and, and we want to have a conversation about maybe send that to Mark and we can put them on for, for the, the May 4th agenda. Does that make sense? Okay. So that's, so that's, that's the one big category. The second one is, uh, first I'll, I'll refer to Lisa because she and I had a brief conversation about something that we've talked about a lot the last year, and that is the, um, uh, the dedication of the Little League field. You want to talk about that, Lisa?
I do. Thank you. So, um, Little League, uh, and I shouldn't say Little League, baseball is going to be sending a letter to the board, um, as they did when the field was named in honor of Eric Green. So they're going to be sending a request to name field, I believe it's field one, um, after Brian Shifrin. Their date to, they've set a hard date of June 2nd, to make it the dedication day. That is the ALS Lou Gehrig's Day. And their plan is to have, uh, Brian's daughter Courtney play on that field. So, um, and then do the dedication afterwards. So we will be seeing a letter from them within the next week or so. So Marty can get that on the schedule and baseball can come in. And, um, again, just, just have the discussion on, on why they want to do this in honor of Brian. And, um, the board has to take a position, um, before they can officially name the field. So that's in a nutshell, kind of where we're at. So this, these discussions have been going on for the last year. So.
Yeah. And so Lisa, just to follow up, I'm guessing that, that, that hopefully can be on our May 4th agenda as well.
Yeah. So they're tentatively, they're moving forth with the 62 date. So, um, hoping obviously that the board is, is going to be supportive of that. So.
Two other things, and maybe we can hold this till, Lisa, you want to talk about the downtown initiative? Because one of the other scheduling things is whether or not the question about another, another forum, but that's tied into, um, you know, the real, and this is part of the discussion about the downtown initiative is the, um, you know, John Wood has been pushing me about this forever. I, Bonnie Fennep sent me an email about it. And that is the pretty important part of the, 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 um, considerations for the initiative is the, 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 the likelihood, certainly the possibility, right? I think the likelihood that a decent part of the zoning article is probably going to only need a 50% vote. And we need to be very careful about the way we structure the article, which may, which will lead into a discussion about whether or not it's appropriate for the annual town meeting or the special town meeting we were talking about. And then the final thing is, well, two final things. Um, number one, it won't happen before the 20th meeting, but I've got, I've been, I've, I've, I've had a series of meetings with folks from St. Mark's and Fay. And I, I, eternal optimist, uh, I've got follow-up meetings in the next week or 10 days with both of those institutions with an idea for, um, uh, maybe some targeted donations, um, thinking about fiscal year 22. So discussions have been, you know, um, uh, very productive, although not final. And I'm, I'm hopeful going into, um, into the, the stretch run with, um, uh, again, you know, who knows, maybe I'm going to be proven wrong, but I think the, I think the approach of, of dealing with St. Mark's and Fay as partners as opposed to adversaries is, I think it's the right one for the town. Um, and hopefully we get some fruition. We got some last year with both Fay School with its, with its contributions for the, um, uh, the materials relating to COVID, um, which was significant. And St. Mark's made additional contributions related to properties they had bought. So we had movement from both of the schools last year. Hopefully we'll have some additional movement this year. As I said, I think approaching it as a, as, as their partners, neighbors as opposed, as opposed to adversaries is the right one. And knock on wood, we'll get some additional movement in the next couple of weeks. And then the final thing is, um, I've had, um, discussions with the, with the, um, representatives of the veterans about the old burial ground. In fact, I, I will send out a, a letter and an email that I got from Mr. Kalender and Mr. Why Not today. Basically what I said to them is you folks have been the, the custodians, the, um, you know, the, the shepherds of the, the, um, the, the old burial, burial ground as well as other institutions. We've got Memorial Day coming up. The last thing I want to do is, is impact the, you know, terrific celebrations they put on for, um, Memorial Day over the years. And they've asked for it to be put on our agenda as soon as possible. So I'm targeting May 4th. I'll send out what they sent to me and we'll give them the opportunity to come in and, um, make their proposal for what they, what they think is appropriate for going forward. And I think ultimately the decision is ours about what to do with it. Again, I wish that the, I wish this had been handled differently than it was. Um, going back to the point I made about Fay and St. Mark's. I don't like that, that issues like this are, are posed in an adversarial way. I don't think that's productive at all. I don't think that's what the veterans are doing here. And, um, um, hopefully we can have a positive discussion on May 4th about, about, uh, going forward with the old burial, burial ground and elsewhere. If anybody wants to weigh in on that, that's fine. Otherwise that'll be on the May 4th agenda as well. Okay. So beginning that, I just got it in, um, if I were quicker techni- technology, technology wise, I'd send it out right now, but I'm not. So I'll get it out to you, um, either later tonight or first thing tomorrow, what I got from, from Dan Kalender and Steve Why Not. And I think that is it for me. Um, any members reports or town administrator reports?
I just have a question.
Whoops. Chelsea spoke first.
I just have a question. Are we going to, um, talk about the leasing option that I think Brian put together?
For the, um, capital items?
Yes. Okay. Is that, is that going to be next?
We do that tonight if you want.
Okay. Well, I mean, he's here.
I mean, I, I'm, I'm fine talking about it tonight. Brian, are you comfortable? Are you prepared to talk about how, how you came to the, to the leasing option and why the, um, the items were chosen that were? Okay. Fine. We'll get to that in a minute. Um, Sam, you had something?
My comment simply was the flag pole looks great.
Boy, doesn't the flag pole look great. It really does. I mean, Mark, you did a terrific job on, on, you know, on, on dealing with some interesting actors. And it does, I mean, driving up, you know, I, I'm, I come west down Main Street and it really, it's, it's one of these funny things. You don't realize how much you missed it till it comes back. Um, it really is a, is a, is a, terrific revisiting for the town. So nice work for, to you and, and Aldo and all the others who did, who did really nice work on that.
And John, and I just want to specifically mention John Parent on that as well. He helped to shepherd that whole thing. Um, I, I've had comments that people have said, wow, it's so much taller than the other pole. It really isn't. It's, it's just about the same size, but I think because it was gone and everything in that, all of a sudden having it back was, you know, was great. So, um, it is nice. And, and I, uh, the day that it was up, the day they completed it, um, Brian Shea had reached out and, and he was, uh, actually going down to golf at, uh, at, at the, uh, the golf club. And I says, let me know if you can see it, you know, while you're down there playing. Because, you know, it's tall enough, you can pretty much see it from anywhere.
I think you can see it from Newton.
So hopefully it closes that loop and, and, you know, we're done with that.
Was that the cellular vendor I saw hanging from the top of the pole up there?
It could have been because the flag was originally at half staff when it was completed. So you, you know, never know. Uh, but one other item since, um, uh, just to close out what I would have, um, the, uh, the regional vaccination clinic opens tomorrow. Um, it's going to be open, uh, It's going to be open Wednesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday for at least the next several weeks. The towns. Received an allocation of 1,500 doses in Moderna. County Southboro received a a separate link. Out of those 1,500, we had 60 dedicated. Each community had 60 dedicated appointments. And I wanted to thank Vanessa and Dr. Alker. And I believe a couple of members of the Board of Selectmen helped to ensure that we got those appointments filled. So we used all those. If we didn't fill them, it would have gone back into the general allocation and 75% of those appointments need to be filled based on the the scheduling through the state system. We're anticipating another 1,500 doses in Moderna next week. And and that looks to be the pattern at least through the end of the month. And then we'll see if if things change. I know the news about J and J today is is going to complicate things a little bit. But but we we see that we're going to be getting a fairly steady dosage of a vaccine for a little bit. I was up at the the site today with Dr. Alker and Chief Achilles and several of the people from the other communities. Great job. I just want to give a special shout out to the health agent in Northborough, Kristen Black. She did a great job. Helping to orchestrate this whole thing. And it's a lot of work and it looks like it's going to pay off nicely for the communities.
Hey, Mark, I guess related enough to that. You know, more and more people are being. Vaccinated. You know, everybody is thirsting for for normalcy. We don't have to do it tonight, but maybe, you know, I'll load up May 4th. I actually think that it's worth a conversation with the board, for our our board to talk about. When we're going to have some in person meetings.
I miss them.
Yeah. I I. I I think circumstances are are close, if they're not ripe yet, for for, you know, setting up parameters and 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 having some meetings in person. I think that's, I think that message would be important. That we we are, we are moving, we are moving strongly in the right direction towards normalcy. So again, I don't think we have to talk about it tonight, but let's maybe between now and the 4th. You know, through the through the MMA and and maybe Lisa, you can reach out as well. See, see what sort of guidelines are being developed for boards and committees to start meeting in in person again. And maybe with our new IT guy, which it sounds like we're going to talk with next week. I I think clearly we're we're going to need to come up with a a mechanism. Everybody's getting so used to Zoom that that we can have the kind of hybrid meetings, that if, you know, if if Chelsea Malinowski is is, where do you go, in Antucket? But if you're seriously, but if you're in Antucket, that you should be able to participate in the meetings. I mean, you know, we've been able to do it. I'm in New Jersey next week. I'm still going to be participating in the meetings. You know, it's 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 more participatory in a weird way now than it was before, both in terms of us and folks being able to weigh in by Zoom as opposed to having to, you know, trundle down to the to the to the townhouse. So that's a big, that's a conversation we need to have with our IT folks about how we're going to accomplish that. But but the more important thing is how we're going to accomplish moving towards having some meetings in person again. I just think that's really, really important for us and for the town.
So just a couple of comments on that. I I completely agree. I think the issue is not so much getting the boards back in person. It's finding a way to safely accommodate people who come to our meetings. Who want to speak and who were there for certain topics. I I don't know that. Brian was ready to to say anything tonight, but obviously taxes are going to be due coming soon and Brian and I have been talking with John Parent about opening up the townhouse. First floor, limited capacity for for some hours for people to come in to pay their taxes in person. And we're just looking, putting in a little more Plexiglas and and some additional directionals in, but doing that the Thursday and Friday prior to them being, the taxes being due and then as well as May 3rd. And and providing some hours to do that. I've been having conversations with Pam down at the senior center about her plans to try to bring back some in person programming. Initially, a lot of it's going to be outside, but hopefully starting to transition some smaller group things, you know, back into the building. So. Yeah, I I think it's important for us to get there. I hope we continue to move in the right direction in terms of this pandemic and it doesn't throw us another curve ball, because we had talked about trying to reopen a little bit last Labor Day. And and just as we were on the cusp of doing something, everything went south again. So, you know, we're we're absolutely looking in that direction. And again, I will add that to the ever growing plate of our new IT manager. To take a take a look at how that's going to happen.
Marty, can I add something to the, sorry, just to the to the vaccination clinic? I just wanted to give a shout out also to the certain MRC town, MRC group from town. They've dedicated, six, six volunteers have stepped forward for each day to help with greeting, with certain process things with the clinic. So again, you know, we're we're having volunteers that are stepping forward that are are able to do this. So just a shout out to them as well.
Marty?
Yep, Sam?
Question about continuing with Zoom meetings, or at least partial Zoom meetings. I recall that the state was looking at guidelines for what was going to work relative to meeting participation electronically. Do you know if anything ever came out from them about what you can and can't do?
I don't. I I mean, I remember the same rumblings that I think you're probably remembering. I I don't, I haven't seen anything and and, you know, we've got our we've got our district representative here. Has anything come through, Lisa, that at any of your meetings?
So interestingly enough, today was an MMA board rating. And one of the things they did talk about was more, Sam, on the town meeting side. There there's legislation out there to do remote town meetings and hybrid town meetings, have people be able to do both. It's sitting in the Ways and Means Committee, I believe, at this time. So, I mean, they are advancing forward. Whether it's going to be before we're back to normal or not, I I don't know. As far as, go ahead, Sam, sorry.
Maybe a question for our representative or senator to see if the state is working on anything there.
Yeah, and I could certainly send a note back out through the MMA as well. I know that certain communities are working on on putting steps together, but but nothing concrete has been in place yet.
I mean, I have to think with the way that the way that we've done. You know, we've done meetings. And the funny thing is, is, you know, the participation rate has been 100%. You know, for for a lot of these meetings, I I don't think there's a board member on this board that's missed a meeting. You know, and and I really have to think that it's going to, Zoom is going to continue and virtual meetings is going to continue to be used as a tool. You know, moving forward, the state's just got to give us the parameters of what we can do, you know, within open meeting law requirements.
This is so much fun. I don't want to miss it.
Well, I think it's an opportunity too. There are a lot of boards and committees that typically aren't recorded. So, you know, and it's nice too to be able to go back. I I may not always be at a meeting, but I have the opportunity to now go back and and watch boards and committees that, you know, if you couldn't see them in person.
Think behavior may be a little better as meetings are videoed, as a matter of fact.
Across the board. All right. Our final public comment. Well, three things, I guess. We've got to approve the open session minutes. But then I think then we'll have Brian address Ms. Malinowski's question about the leasing. Then Lisa, you're going to talk about an update on the downtown initiative and timing and everything about that. Then public comment, and I think we're out of here. So I think that's.
Had a comment. Is that going to be in public comment?
I'm sorry?
Mr. Butler had a comment. Is that going to be in public comment? He put a question note in the chat.
He did? He's still there. I didn't see his, I guess it's going to be.
Note in the chat.
But he's got his hand up, so let's see if it relates to any of these things. Do we have a chat? Was he? He'd like to say, he wants to talk about the St. Marks article. We've touched base about that. So. Johnny, there?
Yes, yes, hi. Is it okay to say something about that now?
Yeah, we talked about it. So we're just referencing back now to to.
So.
Notice you earlier.
So I would, I would just say about that, that I'm I'm, I I think that the supposition that it would not lead to legal entanglement, as you suggested, is probably correct. We can't be sure, but but I think that even so, I I think it's not a good place for the town to go to be funding that. And my reasoning basically is that there are five churches here in town. None of them are new. And all of them presumably have parishioners, we have all Christian churches here in town, parishioners who are being, who are, for whom are, for whom, who are being solicited for donations for capital upkeep of those structures. In addition, citizens here in town are probably members of another five to 10 congregations in other communities, synagogues, temples and other. And those people are also being solicited for capital upkeep of those synagogues, churches and temples in other communities. I, in, for a request of $300,000, which if you multiply times the five churches here would mean, you know, one and a, one and a half million dollars. Is, I think, too much for us to give to one church when all the others are being supported by private donations. And I would not like to think that people and members of other congregations in town would feel that you know, for some reason that they, that isn't, isn't really adequately explainable that their their institution has to be supported privately when this one is supported with tax dollars. And I also don't think it's appropriate for every citizen to have to pay a tax for this institution when they are being asked to privately support all the others, or whatever one they're a member of. So for those reasons, internally independent of legal issues. I I just don't think it's a good idea for us to spend $300,000 on one church.
Fair enough.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, John. So we ready to move on? Let's get rid of the minutes. Are there any holes? No. All right. I will move then that we approve the March 23, 2021. Open session minutes.
Second.
Second invite, Ms. Malinowski. She beat you, Sam. Discussion none. All in favor, Ms. Brascio?
Aye.
Ms. Malinowski?
Aye.
Mr. Shea?
Aye.
Mr. Divers?
Aye.
Mr. Helias, aye. They are approved. Now we'll go to Ms. Malinowski's question to and Mr. Valentine on the leasing.
So we are recommending three DPW and three fire pieces that would be eligible for leasing. So we kind of looked into this earlier in the year. We started poking around a little bit. And decided to try it. It's not something we'd probably do every year. I think it depends what's in front of you. It's not something we'd do with regular replacement equipment. Lease vehicles, things like that. I think we got to stay away from. But when we looked at the numbers, it was, it was fairly close with bonding. And actually, the interest rates were a little lower. They're not always like that, but they're they were a little lower for leasing. It was just a, it's just a good time right now, but our interest rates are so low. So. We're looking at recommending that and that took about 200 and 230, 240,000 dollars out of the budget because we're going to spread those over the term of the lease, obviously. We do, you know, we're cognizant about being cautious about having leases on top of leases. It's not something we want to do. But I think given that this type of year, we really wanted to get the tax rate low. The interest rates were really good. We had some good pieces of equipment out there to to opt in on. It was probably the year to try this. So we'll see how it goes. It it's supposedly a lot simpler to get into these things than than bonds. Bonds are you have to go through the legal review, then you have to go through signing parties that, you know, the board does. It's a little complicated. So this is a little quicker and easier, less dirty, very streamlined. I think it's something that, again, it's just a tool in the toolbox. We may not use it again next year or the year after. But I think this is the right year to do it. There's one caveat, and that's the fire tender. The total of the group leases are 1.1 million. The fire tender is 400,000. Because we're going for a FEMA grant on the fire tender. If we do not know about that at town meeting. We're probably going to recommend bonding it because if we do get the FEMA grant, it becomes a problem in the mechanics of the lease, because you have to use, usually you have to use a FEMA grant within so much amount of time and it's fairly quick. Which with a bond, you could do very quickly, but with a lease, you're you're into a term, you know, payback over a term. So that that becomes problematic and I'd rather avoid jeopardizing a FEMA grant that, you know, would be great for a tender than going for a lease. So we're probably going to end up. Because I don't think the chief said we're we're likely to know about that by town meeting. So I I think we're probably going to recommend bonding that, which is okay. It's still good. It's still good rates for bonding too. So that's pretty much the story, I think. Just to give you, it was an ambulance, the fire tender. Two utility DPW vehicles, fire chief vehicle, I think, in the hook truck. Which was a great, a great piece of material to have leased. So that's the equipment and the board will have to vote to approve that. And the board, if the, if the selectmen don't approve to vote on that, it kills it. So the, even if town meeting approves it, if you guys don't approve it, where, you know, it's not going to happen. So so hopefully the board will approve it. The only other thing is Capitol's working on getting a recommendation for useful life for the equipment, because obviously by law, we have to vote a useful life. Because they don't want you to borrow things that only last five years and you borrow them for 10. That's not too smart. So so at some point, we'll have that in front of the board too, just to vote the lives of the equipment. And we'll see where it goes.
Chelsea, did that cover the the questions you had?
I have, I I do have a few follow ups, if that's okay.
Okay, go ahead.
So is this, what's the term of the lease, do you know, Brian?
Yeah, they're they're all going to be seven years except for the ambulance. The ambulance, from what I I've learned, is gets beat up on so much that five years is seems to be the 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 recommended life of that. So the life would probably be longer, but we're not going to do it one in five years.
Okay. And so is it, you get one lease for all of these or you get, you take the lease out when you receive the vehicle like you would when you bond?
It's one lease for all of them, but it's held in an escrow account. And so they put it in an escrow where no one really has the money. And then when you pay for it at the manufacturer, they release the escrow. And then all the payments will come due on January 1st. For all of them.
Okay.
Annually.
So we, we in theory wouldn't have an ambulance until a year from town meeting, so we'd have a payment for it before we get it.
We could, yes, potentially.
Okay. And do we? Have you, I'm sure you've looked at this, but do you feel confident that we're good with the ambulance fund revenue because we have an engine coming that you haven't bonded yet, right? And then if we don't get the grant for the tender, we wouldn't bond that for another year? Or when we get it? And then you'd be making a lease payment for the ambulance? So are you?
Yeah, I'm going to have to, I may have to push off the tender a little bit, which might work out because with the CPC article and their cash flow issues, they they have been raising. It may work out if we can push that off too. So we kind of move them, we move them in unison, maybe a year down the road. We just do a short term note.
Okay.
And because you're right, the ambulance fund is going to be pinched in FY 23, because I think that's the last year of the fire debt payment for the previous fire trucks. So that's kind of the year we're going to be really tight. And I'm trying to keep, trying to keep things away from that year.
All right. Thanks, Brian.
Well said. Anybody else?
Yeah, Marty, I just got one, one thing I want to point out and and Brian can correct me if I'm wrong, but the article itself that we're handling the leasing under and the 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 one option to do either leasing or bonding for the tender. That article is normally reserved for borrowing. We've.
That article is normally reserved for borrowing. We've restructured the language in that article. Bond Council's completely redone it to make it leasing. So I know you're waiting until next week to take positions on things. But I'd love to know tonight that the board is going to approve going forward like this. Because if not, and if you don't want to, if you don't want to do the leasing, then, and Brian, correct me if I'm wrong, a bond council is probably going to have to redo the language of that article.
Yeah, we would probably restructure the article. That's a good point.
I'll weigh in. I mean, I saw the with pretty extensive conversations at Capital Planning with Andrew Pfaff. I'm not sure what he does, but he's pretty expert talking about this stuff. And um, you know, the explanations that were that were, you know, offered at at those meetings and what Brian just covered here. It particularly, given what we're trying to accomplish in pressure downward in fiscal year '22. It I agree that there's a that there's a concern for layering leases on leases going forward. But we know we don't want to do that, so doing it in a single year when there's then when downward pressure is, I think, appropriate. I'm comfortable with that. That's my view. If anybody else wants to. Yeah, Sam?
All right. I I think it's a great idea. I actually used to work for a leasing company. And the the thing I think is inherent here is that leasing is always going to be an attractive option, given that we don't pay taxes, but companies who do pay taxes can use the write offs from a lease deal. And so I think that's going to be valuable, and given the likelihood of increased corporate tax rates going forward, it's going to be even more valuable for companies who are looking for write offs that can be transferred through leasing companies. And so I think it's a great thing to get it started here and see how it works. And as Brian suggests, let's do the paperwork, see how it works. And if it is relatively straightforward, I think that's a great tool to have in our toolbox going forward. Because I think the advantage for leasing is likely to increase over the next several years here, so I'm strongly in favor of this.
Lisa or Chelsea want to weigh in? No?
I think it's clever to Paul.
Yeah, so I think I don't think we need to take a vote tonight, Mark, but I think it's.
Yeah, no, that's fine. Thank you. I I just wanted to, if we were going to have to shift that language around, I wanted to get bond counsel on that fairly quickly. So thank you.
That's great.
All right, we are Lisa for the downtown update.
All right, so I have a couple of updates and a request from the board also. So at at the last meeting, we spoke about that I was coordinating a meeting with EDC to work on a letter that we were going to get out to the split lot owners. I had every intention of taking care of that last week, but unfortunately, a couple of personal complications arose. Uh, so that's been put off probably till the end of this week, maybe the beginning of next week. Um, also, one of the things I'd mentioned to the board was that there were still um, five outstanding, five larger outstanding issues potentially. Planning Board has added a few more to that from a meeting last night. So my question, suggestion to the board is this. While we are continuing to talk about a fall town meeting, um, I am going to ask the board to consider putting the downtown initiative off until the fall. I personally don't think we're there yet, and I'm going to give you a couple of reasons why. Um, I I worry about having to have the article and the language in the warrant for next Tuesday. And I always worry on a zoning article with outstanding issues such as these, including the map. And we're still not clear on the language that may or may not be needed. Uh, additional language for the map, we haven't, I'm still waiting to hear back from Attorney Costa on that. So I always worry about making amendments on town meeting floor to an article that we're bringing forward. That's one of the points. Um, a fall town meeting would also give us, hopefully, the opportunity to be able to give a real presentation than trying to to pitch a a zoning change like this via a handout at town meeting. I think that's going to be somewhat challenging. It may be the same in the fall. I don't know. But also, our forums have been so well attended that it also allows us to continue doing outreach and potentially thinking outside the box on a few things to attract voters. I know one of the things I had spoken to Julie Conley about and and potentially John is, you know, we have an opportunity here to reach out to, we know the same core group of town meeting voters show up at every town meeting. It gives us the opportunity also to do some outreach to them to make sure that they're clear. Also, it gives us the opportunity to think outside the box and potentially have a um, a twofold forum to hopefully entice people that are newer in town that maybe have never been to a town meeting and don't know how a town meeting works, to be able to do it twofold, to hopefully bring new voters to town meeting, to do a forum to explain how a town meeting works, as well as being able to use the the downtown initiative as a backdrop to that and and go through different options with that as well. Um, also, um, we we it also allows us to make more use of the grant. The grant has to be used by June 30th. Um, and I would imagine by June 30th, we're going to have buttoned up quite a bit. Um, also, it will allow us to better prepare for town meeting. At this point, there's just too many un-unaddressed concerns, and I worry about that. And and the neighbors have concerns as well. I'd like to to have some meetings with the neighbors as well. Um, but the one thing I do think if we agree to do this is we need to stick to a very aggressive timeline to have everything wrapped up by early August. So that all the forums that we're going to have, I think it would be better to take the time and do it right than to rush something and hope it's ready. We still don't know what the percentage is yet. Adam Costa, waiting for feedback on him on that as well, whether it's a 51% or um, a two thirds. Um, also, I have spoken to Julie Conley and John Woods about this. Um, I obviously assured them as well that we appreciate all the time and energy over the last three years that EDC has put into this. And this is in no way trying to hinder moving it forward. It's just creating additional opportunities. Uh, well, they would like to continue to move it forward sooner rather than later. They understand the concerns. And really, all they want, they both said to me, is what's best for the downtown and its residents and and what we need to do in order to get this to pass. So um, that being said, um, where we're a week away from printing the warrant, I'm I'm asking the board to consider to committing to a a fall town meeting and and putting this on in the fall. I just personally, I mean, everybody can take the position they want. I just don't think it's ready based on uh, some of the outstanding concerns we have. So I will open it up to thoughts.
I'll I'll weigh in first. I think it's an easy call. I mean, I I've I've sort of been signaling that for for a few meetings that I think that's that that is the um, um, that's the right way to go, and particularly on the on the uh, on the voting there. I mean, I think it's great news. That the um, uh, because of the affordable housing aspect of it, that 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 a good chunk of it is probably on only going to require 50% vote to get approved. I think that's very good news. Um, um, I think it's really important to touch base with the landowners. Um, and I think it's I think it's going to be very uh, interesting to see the position of the folks who actually own those properties. I'm very interested in seeing that. But anyway, Lisa, you've been doing so much work on this and and have been, you know, have moved this from from point A to point, you know, W X Y. You know, wherever we are, you know, I I don't want to mess it up by by rushing too quickly to Z. So let's, I'm I'm perfectly comfortable committing to, A, a fall town meeting with this as as the um, a primary article at the meeting.
Yeah, and again, just to reiterate, Marty, as well, that 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 the EDC for so long, as Claire had said earlier, under public comment, you know, this has been almost a three-year project for them.
Yeah.
And uh, we have made, working together and everybody collaborating together in the last six months, I think we've made huge strides, you know, in moving this forward. I think I think the the end zone is there. We're we're close to getting there. But I again, just to take that step back and just make sure we do it right.
I'm with you. All right, I'm going to go with Ms. Malinowski first.
I agree. I think um, it gives the opportunity for it to be completely debated at town meeting, too. I think we have a lot of ground that we need to cover at this annual. Um, and I think it gives us a little bit more time to resolve some of the issues. I don't think that we're going to resolve everything to make everyone happy, but I think that there are some things that we probably can make headway on between now and a fall town meeting. Um, so I'd be supportive of um, taking that up.
Mr. Shea?
Uh, I support that as well. Part of me feels badly with all the work that you and EDC have put into it that we need to defer to the fall, but for the long-term benefit of that article, I think the best thing to do is to wait until the fall.
And Mr. Stybers?
Yeah, I agree as well. Um, I mean, I, again, my primary interest is actually getting something important done here. And I think there have been a lot of people who've done a lot of heavy lifting to get us this far. And I think if you go into a town meeting without as many of the pieces buttoned up as you can possibly button up, it decreases your chances of getting the vote that you need. So I think it's worth a little bit of delay to, I think, substantially increase the chance that we'll get this approved. So I think that's a good choice.
And and I'll just leave with this thought is that, you know, it it creates, I I view this, and I had said this to Julie and John. And I think this is is an opportunity. I view this as an opportunity, not a setback. You know, we our forums have been so well attended. And to be able to continue the momentum and carry that forward, I know Mr. Miller has has had a lot of comments. And and I'd like the opportunity, um, you know, to sit down and have a conversation, you know, with him as well. Mr. Hokinson has has sent a note. And again, it it just creates an opportunity to wrap this up, you know, in a in a good package that. Um, and again, there there'll always be those that that will not support it. That's 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 okay. But as long as we've done our job and everyone's been heard, then I think that's the main thing.
All right, so you're not shooting for 100% vote?
It'd be nice, but.
No, I think all that all that makes sense. Okay, I don't think we need to take a formal vote tonight, but it's clear that that's that's the that's the sentiment of the board.
So Mark, what do we need to do to withdraw this from the warrant or postpone it, however? You you what is the process for this?
Uh, I I, based on the sentiment of the board, I can simply take it off at this point. The booze is a selectman sponsored article, so. I'll remove it and and um, you know, we'll we'll place it on a a warrant. Um, you know, that we can look to schedule sometime in the fall.
Okay, and I'll also, I'll I'll shoot an email out tonight to Karina from Planning so she can let Planning know that, you know, it's not going forward to the public hearings at this point. Don't have to go forward with planning board either.
But what but but, I agree with that. But um, um, and I think this is the point you were making earlier. We don't want to, let's assume we're going to have a town meeting in October. We don't want this to sit until August.
No. So another thing we had talked about, again, I I had a conversation with Julie and John as we were thinking. We still want to have at least one, if not two, or more joint meetings. We want to bring planning board back in. We want to still collaborate and try to, you know, get everybody on board with this. Take the opportunity of the time that we have. So no, it's it's still moving forward. You're still going to get an update every month as to, you know, what we're doing. There's still going to be forums. There's still going to be a a ton of good things going on, but I just, um, and again, planning board may, I I don't know. I would assume they're going to have to post repost for the fall. But um, you know, they have to work on design standards as well. Their design standards. So, you know, this this gives everybody the opportunity to, you know, work together and and try to get this done. So.
Right, makes sense to me. All right, um, we're going to deal with the AT, the annual town meeting warrant articles on April 20th. We are on item seven, public comment. Going, all right, we have a public comment. Mr. Miller?
Hi, thank you for recognizing me. Um, the Ms. Brascio's comments just now in the downtown district are, of course, very encouraging to me. Um, and, you know, I just want to um, get a somewhat of a clarification. Um, you know, I I followed this issue from call to call. And for instance, I was on the EDC call on Friday, the 9th in the morning, um, at during which time the Chair, Mr. Wood, indicated that the BOS would be reaching out to different landowners and stakeholders. And I asked him about this, and I I indicated that I was on your previous meeting on April 6th, when the board indicated that you were only going to send a letter to the split lot owners. I brought this up again, or again, came up in the planning board meeting last night, um, where a member of the planning board indicated again that the Board of Selectmen planned to consult the Butters as well as the split lot owners. And so I I see some movement now in that direction, which encourages me. Um, because, you know, again, having heard your last call, um, it seemed like there was only an impulse to reach out to the split lot owners. And and so I I would say two things. One, um, I I would hope that there would be outreach to the Butters, people adjacent to the district, neighbors i-in total. Um, because, of course, you you know, the fact of the matter is that those folks, and and again, full disclosure, I'm one of them, are subject to potentially greater negative impact than anyone with property, in fact, inside the district. Um, we're the ones that may suffer light noise, pollution, decrease in property values and so on, if this goes sideways. So we have a very, very large stake, and I I I hope that I I see that being understood. Um, and and I I hope that trend will continue. Um, secondly, I would ask the board, just as a matter of full disclosure and public record keeping, to release whatever letter is sent to the split lot owners, um, especially given that my understanding from the EDC that Adam Costa's had a hand in this. So this is, you know, public funds going to crafting a letter to the split lot owners. Um, and I think it it would be good for everybody to know what is said in that letter, what's proffered. Um, and I would hope that the same courtesy would be extended again, to the Butters and neighbors who are not either, depending on your point of view, cursed or fortunate enough to have lots that are actually split by the seemingly odd lines of the existing zoning. Anyway, that's all, and thank you very much for your time.
Marty, can I, is it okay if I just make a brief comment?
Sure.
Yeah, just just briefly. So so, Mr. Miller, thank you for your comments. And um, like I said, I I will be reaching out to you. Um, you know, I certainly am interested in having a a larger discussion with you. So I guess I will, I will leave it at that. I have your email from an email that you were copied on, so I'll I'll be reaching out to you this week.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lisa. All right, other public comment, going once, going twice. Move to adjourn. I I heard that. I heard Mr. Shea. All right.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Stybers. Discussion none. Ms. Brascio?
Aye.
Malinowski?
Aye.
Mr. Shea?
Aye.
Mr. Stybers?
Aye.
And before I say aye, we're on, this is our last, what is it, six Tuesdays in a row? Um, and then we get a break. Um, so we'll see everybody on the 20th, and Mr. Healy is aye. Have a good night, everybody.